All right, well, I'll just talk to myself then for a minute.
And that week before on a Wednesday or Thursday, they opened it up online? I just did it online?
I really want to play the Gumball scene.
I haven't got my, have you got your certificate back yet from online? What did you do, call them?
I did, but they sent it that following Monday.
We got your file, we got it.
All right. Should we get going?
Check my mailbox?
Well, not right now.
After the meeting.
Okay. I called the March 19th, 2024 work session of the Riverton City Council to order at 6:01 PM. My apology is a little tardy tonight. Councilmember Cox, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then I'll give us the invocation for this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together here in a work session. We're grateful for the hard work of our city of Riverton employees. That they are willing to put time into improving our city and to making it a better place to live. We're so grateful for those who serve us in many capacities, either as first responders or in the military or other capacities that make it possible for us to live here in this beautiful community and enjoy the amenities we have. We are so grateful for the opportunity to serve and ask thee to please bless us tonight as we discuss the needs of the city that we will be enlightened as to the best way to ensure that the taxpayers are well represented and that we are doing what will benefit our community most. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
City Administrator, well, I guess, you're gonna call the roll or who's gonna do it?
I would do that, Your Honor.
All right, Administrative Services Director Harris, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Councilman Dean Peranto.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury.
Absent.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here. I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I vote aye, motion passes and I declare we have a quorum. I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson with the motion, Councilwoman Cox with the second. Discussion amendments, additions, subtractions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Discussion of half percent optional excise tax for economic development. Mr. Betterfield, do you want to start us off or how do we want to do this?
Yes, Your Honor, if it's okay, I'll start it off and want to thank you for meeting earlier tonight. Want to thank the members of the Edge Committee for being here and their hard work, members of the public that are also in attendance. We are on a tight timeframe and there's nothing better than knowing that and just getting stuff done. So I'll try and be efficient in my comments as well. In brief, I thought it'd be important to lay a foundation of the optional half percent tax. After that, if it's okay, Sylee and Kevin Krasznik are here to go over principles of economic development and the strategies available to you as a city council on how to work on economic development. And then after that, obviously, Mayor, it's up to you and the council for your discussion. The city council adopted Resolution 1411 on March 17th, 2020. And that resolution specifically supported the addition of the optional excise tax for economic development on the ballot. The ballot language specifically states that, and I'll go through this quickly, but it relates to the half percent of the optional sales tax for economic development purposes. And economic development shall be defined as any project that retains or increases employment and/or results in the net gain of money into the community. Thirty percent of the net proceeds of the tax shall be used to support transportation infrastructure such as commercial air service. The remaining seventy percent will be allocated to the county and six municipalities based on population to manage and invest in economic development projects of their choosing. Economic development projects on the Wind River Indian Reservation are eligible for county allocation. If passed, the tax would be in place until the 2022 general election, excuse me, will be placed on the, anyway. I'll leave that there. I know I gotta go quick. But I wanted to at least reread the ballot language. This is word for word what the community approved and how the ballot initiative defined economic development. And again, that is retaining jobs, retaining or increasing employment and/or projects that result in a net gain of money into the community. Following the resolution and also the action of the community, Fremont County Association of Governments on December 18th, 2020 entered into a memorandum of understanding. That memorandum of understanding will be discussed later on tonight in your business meeting, but the high notes are that the parties of the MOU, so those are the governments participating in F-CAG, agree that twenty percent of each of the party's proceeds will be distributed to the city of Riverton for commercial air service. And that ten percent of each of their proceeds from the sales tax will be distributed to F-CAG for ground transportation. The remaining seventy percent of the sales tax collected for economic development will be distributed based on population to the parties who each have the right to designate staff, create a committee, or assign an existing economic development organization to receive and review all submitted economic development project proposals for their respective municipality or county. Based on the needs of their community, the economic impact, net inflow of cash, and retaining and growing jobs, the assigned group will make a recommendation to their respective governing body, city council or county commissioners, for final approval. So we know what the ballot said. We now have reviewed again what the MOU states, and that is twenty percent of the thirty go to air service, ten percent of the thirty go to ground transportation, and the seventy percent will be for your discretion, however, with the recommendation and advice of a committee or an existing EDO. On September 1st, 2020, Resolution 1422 established the Evolve, Diversify, and Grow Our Economy Committee. And it is for the purpose of advising the mayor and council on priorities for the use of revenues generated by the optional one percent excise tax revenues. I think it's important to go through the base building block, so to speak, of how the tax came into place and what your roles are based on the ballot initiative and your existing MOU, and also how you've empowered your Edge Committee to date. There's a handout and other items that are before you, but I think it's important to note that sixteen projects have been recommended and approved. The amount approved, if you look at your sheet that has the vertical lines, the table, the total amount approved is $1,941,977. I think it's interesting to note that $3,587,452 were requested by those that were approved. So you as a council and as the Edge Committee recommended or awarded fifty-four percent of what was requested by the sixteen that you did approve. And there are several others that went through the process. So not everyone that received funds received everything that they asked for. In total, in sum, fifty-four percent of what was requested was approved. I also like to point out that of the sixteen projects, a total project amount that's going towards economic development in our community is, based on the applications, So for the projects that are being supported by the half cent economic development tax, that's seventy-five million for 1.9 million that was used of the economic development tax. That's where things stand at this point. And Your Honor, if it's okay, I defer now to Mr. Krasznik and Mr. Lee to talk about economic development with you.
Thank you. Krasznik and Mr. Lee. Thank you. You could come up and tell us more.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. So today we have a presentation for you about economic development. We'll go relatively quick, got a bunch of slides, but it shouldn't take us more than, yeah.
Three, four hours.
Yep, there it is. Yeah, we'll be good. So I did a little more research on this and I went back to the International Economic Development Council to see how they defined economic development. And so just as onset, if you had one word to define economic development, what would that be? I'm willing to wager that we're gonna have different answers in this room. You may say growth, you may say jobs. If you want to say anything now, you can.
You took my two favorite.
Oh, did I? Okay, yeah, workforce, all kinds of things come into play. But this is the listing of what the economic development entity had come up with. These were names that came about, see prosperity, changes, teamwork, community-minded, et cetera. And that was pretty interesting, but it basically shows that everyone has a slightly different opinion and feeling as to what exactly is economic development and how do you best do that, right? And with a lot of those, there's probably really no wrong answer, provided we're adhering to the letter of the law from the ballot. Here's some additional information, you have that in your package. The top left is actually a video of economic developers worldwide, how they define economic development. Interesting read. Then the graphic on the right-hand side through that blue section, you can sort of see it, a little bit of an eye chart. But it's showing the businesses, tax collections that fund it, workforce, and the community. All those are intertwined. And then pulled this picture from the Centennial, it's kind of interesting, you show here's Riverton in 1919 and then 2020. You know, economic development, right? Got paved streets, cars go a little bit faster, a lot more businesses there, higher GDP, et cetera. And the interesting thing is if I look at economic development with that definition, it can range anywhere from, let's say a tourist comes to town, they spend $10 at our local food market, right? That's economic development. To this end, which is the Eastern Shoshone Business Park, you know, take you back to 2016, 2015, actually, when we first started conceptualizing what we could do there. Took three years, quarter of a million dollar investment just to get the land to auction, right? Then you needed a developer that says, all right, I'll take that land and I want to develop it, investing millions of dollars. And we don't have any buildings up yet, coming soon, right? There's a lot of good things happening. And then if you look at that full 302 acres, it's probably gonna take till about 2050 to actually get that filled with different businesses. But that'll be the jobs of the future, you know? So that's the whole gamut, it kind of reign, runs the gamut there, runs that range. And so here's the definition, again, the bottom one is what Kyle talked about. This is what is in the ballot verbiage. It retains or increases employment or results in a net gain of money into the community. From an economic development standpoint, these are the items that they say economic development organizations will do. There's the core activities, a lot of things, neighborhood development, for example, revitalization, and the ones that we see with the building blocks, that's the honeycomb structure. And as long as that's growing, you know, it's good for the colony, it's good for the community. That's the thing, we just need to continue to grow. That graphic gets a little overwhelming for me, so I like this one. Which is from the state of Wyoming, it's the building blocks, it's hierarchical, which, you know, isn't necessarily the case. It's been revised to this. And the bottom section there is really the community that we live in, right? The quality of life, workforce, et cetera, that's our community. The top part is what drives the economy, that's our businesses, new businesses existing. And as chairman of RECDA, Mr. Alan Moore says, it takes an economy to create a community and a community to create an economy. So they just continue to feed each other as they go forward. I don't know if you want to get anything in there?
No, just that the foundational principles only apply to the definition and it's always a result of. So as long as you apply these foundational principles to economic development, the result is the same. And it results in cyclical process.
All right, so the next 10, 15 slides or so are just the economic development building blocks. This one here, obviously, the elected officials. You guys can make those decisions to move projects forward, to kill them, to delay them, whatever is best for the community in your eyes. And I'll just run through these, I got some visuals for us. So here's the elected official side. And we'll just kind of make comments as we go, we want to get to the last few slides. Quality of life, a lot of great things going on in our community, you know, from rendezvous days, skate park, river walk, playground for kids, all kinds of great stuff. Education, we have some great institutions around here for education, as you can see. Job Corps, Central Wyoming College, et cetera.
It's the responsibility of these institutions to create a workforce, a skilled workforce that's ready for the jobs that are created through economic development. So the contributing factor to economic development is more of a throughput that creates the output and the outcome. And that throughput is having institutions like this that create a skilled workforce for the jobs that are created through these activities.
Infrastructure, so we have the business parks, we have the airport, airport business parks, EWC, Eastern Shoshone. We have to have broadband connectivity for our businesses, for our homes, et cetera, and utilities, services, et cetera. Then on the economy side, businesses, vibrant local business community. Can see a lot of the businesses here that have been helped by the sales tax. Love the picture in the middle there, that's legacy foam. They actually came out to the Brunton Building to help lift up the concrete that had sagged so we can maintain that property. And that's, you know, two recipients at work in our community doing great things. Innovation, entrepreneurship, again, through the startup challenges, just a lot of new businesses being started. As we say, those are the ones going into the hopper that'll kind of gestate, if you will. They come through and then we're able to help them to grow their business, to expand. A day ain't could find them a building, they'd be the next major employer for our communities. But we have to continue to put these businesses in there to have them produce jobs and bring cash into the community. New business recruitment, you see them, the three on the, from the center around the left-hand side, those are all businesses that came here because the GDP and the economy in our community was increasing. They realized they could make money, they came here. Still had to do a few things with them, I know Kyle and his team, Michael, had done quite a bit with them to make sure that they came here and things worked from the code perspective. But it was great, Kafaru recruitment, and obviously the hospital is gonna be a big one for us all when that is constructed. This is a list of the resources that are available. Really, the item is, if you can see the URL right in the middle, that's the one you should go to, wyomingbusinessresource.org. It's a great website, the SBDC put that together. You can pick by count- You can pick by county, so you can pick Fremont County, and it lists all the economic development resources that are there. Still being added to, but there's about 20, 22 different entities today that are listed on that page. Go ahead and take the other side. Okay, so for economic development, right, if we choose to do nothing, we're going to result to organic growth. Businesses like Dean's, you're going to say, "Okay, I want to grow my business," but you'll go at the speed that you have cash available to you and your risk tolerance, right? That's how things would go. EDOs are in place to help bridge the gap, to give additional financing, additional resources, make connections. We have, what, one-half FTE in Fremont County for economic development. We have a lot of volunteers doing a great job that are moving things forward, and so we're fortunate on that side. You go through, you do the building blocks, get that all established. That organic growth is relatively slow, and in some cases, if it becomes stagnant, then you have to worry about your community surviving and what happens. So there's other ways to do that.
On the external stimulus, under that heading there, you see all the grants, the entities that are available to provide funding, and you'll see the half-cent tax is also under that. These are not government handouts. I know the interpretation a lot of times is that these are government handouts, that they're handouts, and they are not. There is a ton of work that goes into these, a lot of compliance work, the application work, it has to prove to be sustainable to a reviewer who's probably not even an entrepreneur themselves. So a lot of times, a grant to help start a business is 10 times harder than getting a loan to maintain the business, because there's compliance periods. So if you buy equipment, you have to depreciate it over a period of time, and you have to maintain that equipment over a period of time. So the grants that are available, a lot of times have this mischaracterization of being a government handout, but there is a lot of work that go into those, and they are not intended to sustain the business. It's an injection, either at the early onset or in the early stages of the business, to establish the business, purchase some equipment, but you still got to go out and do the work. You still have to perform. And if you can spread your risk out over money that does not have to be repaid, it clears the path for sustainability for any business, for any business. After you've established your business, and you've got a set of financial statements, you got a few clients in your portfolio, and you've proven that you're sustainable, and you go and get a small grant to boost the revenue, you've put a lot of work into it by then. This is not a handout. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to come in front of the Edge Committee, to come in front of the city council that have to generate this small amount of cash to grow your business or establish your business. So there's a mischaracterization here, and a misinterpretation of what these funds, how they originate, and they're meant to be redistributed, right? It's a collection of our existing tax funds that are meant to recirculate back into the economy. So the mischaracterization is something that I think everyone has to overcome, that this is not a handout. There is a ton of work that goes into this, and then a compliance period following that. So the grants that are available, not only locally, at state level, at the federal level, they take a lot of work. They are, by no means are they a handout.
And the last item there, you see the half percent. So this slide here just shows the impact, and I think you've all seen that, probably everybody in the audience has, but we'll go through it real quick. This was done by the Center of Business and Economic Analysis at the University of Wyoming. What we did is, we took all of the recipients that had received sales tax dollars on the half percent, and we gave them a questionnaire. Said, "What, how many jobs have you retained or created? What's your net inflow of cash? And has this been a beneficial program?" That information was the input to the analysis that the university did. And the top section here, these are funds that had been distributed and deployed by the business. So it does not include the hospital, for example, but it does include other entities like legacy foam that had received those monies and actually deployed them, okay? There's the output, and in the center is that graphic. So for every dollar that we've distributed from the sales tax, we have seen $3.91 of economic output. If you include the projections going forward for the hospital and other entities, once they spend these funds, it'll be $7.34. And as a business owner, I'd love to get that return at any time, if I could get that. So it's doing a phenomenal job. The bottom section is, if this tax gets renewed, from 2025 through '28, this would be the economic impact for our community, over $120 million, which is pretty substantial, right? So this tax is a great thing, and I want to thank the Edge Committee for all the work they've done of sorting through and what the council has done. I think it's a great thing. I see a lot of awesome things happening in town. I just came in, hadn't been to the north part of town in a while, but I came through, and it was awesome. You see Haskell Furniture going up, right? You see Sportsman Warehouse, and then you see Sutherland's, like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." Little construction back there, come down further is the coffee shop, Java Java. It's a great place to live, you know? I love it. So we just need to keep that going. And this is probably our last slide, that economic development's a process, it's not an event. It's not, "Okay, here, I give you the money, we're all done, we walk away, life is good," right? We need to continue to help these businesses grow and thrive, and that's part of economic development, and us as community members. How do we help each other survive and thrive in our community?
Although we have different interpretations of what we view as economic development, the foundational principles remain the same. And if we can argue the cause with purpose and intent, as long as it remains true to the purpose within those foundational principles, economic development, here in Riverton, Wyoming, I travel a lot to a lot of different tribal communities, and the neighboring towns do not look like Riverton, Wyoming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may, I just want to say thank you so much to Si Lee and Kevin Krasznik for doing that. They are jewels in our community, they're experts, and they give of their time. I had an opportunity to speak with each of you individually and talk about our process and talk about whether or not changes could be proposed to improve. You have the application form in front of you, you'll notice the information that's required of the applicants. And really, as I spoke with each of you, the common thread was what you wanted was skin in the game from the applicants, and so that there was a multiplier factor of the half-cent development dollars multiplied with personal advancement or conventional financing. And so from that perspective, I think you, as a council, could decide if there's a threshold you would like to see when awards go out, and that would help maybe the Edge Committee with direction. But with that, Your Honor, I think you have some pretty good information. I know Edge Committee members are here, but I'll turn it back to you, and we thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Any, and I apologize, I've been missing my voice for about a week and a couple of days now, so if I am too quiet to be heard, I'm sorry. Any other comments or thoughts or guidance, I guess, that we would be wanting to provide in terms of amounts or percentage? I guess I could start with something that I've been thinking about, has been possibly, right now, the way the program has been working has been, everything has been business grants, and I think everybody has been doing that. And possibly adding more options, I guess. We've talked, for example, about saying, "Well, we could provide a down payment for folks that have a business loan already." We're talking about interest-free loans, and rather than saying that all of it has to be that, saying that we'd have different options that people can apply for, and different options for us to choose, that we would want the projects to be a part of. That was one thought that I had, that would probably require more work from staff, might require more work from Edge, I guess, to make recommendations. I do apologize, by the way, when we had our last meeting, I didn't give you, Mr. Kozaraga, an opportunity to come up and kind of tell us your thoughts on things, and I, that was my oversight, and we'll make sure we do that next time. But I guess just from the council, any thoughts or feedback or things we want to talk about, possibly adjusting or working towards different directions for the 15 minutes we have?
I think I made my position pretty clear. I think that, kind of going back to what was passed with the half cent is really important in that we have the employment growth, and then something that's going to bring people to the community. So when I look at the Edge applicants, that's what I look for. I don't really look for startups, I don't really look for those attributes, because like Kafaru, you know, I know they had some money in the, and some investment in their just moving here anyway, but we funded them to, what was it, like $90,000?
$80,000.
$80,000 was a lot, and the hospital, of course, so, but then we've also funded some things that didn't necessarily have direct employee additional numbers in employees, but we looked at them like the ice hockey and so forth, as far as a facility that could bring people to town. So that's what I look for, and not to take up all the time, but I'll be brief, but as a reminder.
So you, you're looking mostly at, does it fit the statute? And then, I think you had also noted, it is nice to see skin in the game, when you had talked about it previously.
I did, yes, sir. Yes, so not funding fully at that 100%.
Okay. Your Honor, Mr. Bailey?
Again, I would agree with Dean. I think in these grants that we give, the optics are important, and that's the main reason that I think that it should be, you know, a percentage of their total investment, not 100%, because, you know, then it's not considered just free money like Si was talking about. Well, it's, nothing's for free, we all understand. But the optics of how it looks and how the public, you know, perceives what we're doing is important, too. I think we've seen a lot of wonderful projects, we did and didn't fund some of them, but I think we're going to get a better optic in the public if we keep that amount to just a little help, not paying for the whole thing. You know, the employment's great, bringing new businesses, helping existing businesses expand their services, that's what we all think about when we think about economic development. So I think it's all great. We just have to remember that the taxpayer, which is the voter, you know, we don't want to lose the whole thing because, you know, we do some little project that looks like we're just giving somebody free money. Because that's easy to do if you don't look very deep. If you just look at the surface, it's easy to say, "Oh, this guy just got money, and he doesn't deserve it." Well, there's a lot more to it than that. And so, you know, I just want to make sure we don't lose our air service help and our transportation help, which, if you just look at those two together, the amount of economic impact is almost more than all the rest put together. So, you know, we really don't want to risk losing our air service, transportation, you could even throw the ambulance service, which is a huge quality-of-life issue that we've been battling in this county for a long time. Again, everybody wants it, nobody wants to pay for it, you know, kind of a thing. So those things come down to government to help subsidize it at least, so that we still have it. So I don't know that I'd want to live somewhere that didn't have an ambulance that could come get you. Hopefully, I never have to call them, but, so, thank you.
Your Honor? Just to kind of piggyback off of what Mike said, I really want to thank the Edge Committee because you guys do a lot of due diligence, you look through everything, make sure it fits the ballot language, and I personally put a lot of faith in that. So I just want to thank you for what you do, and I look forward to maybe working a little closer together.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate having our Edge members here tonight, and it's a benefit, I think, to us. You know, I was talking with somebody, and part of the question was, "Well, okay, if we're going to, if we disagree with Edge, does that mean anything's broken?" And I said, "No, because the reality is, that's the point. We want to have Edge there to give us a good slice of the community, to give us really that community input." That's the whole point of it. We have people on Edge from a lot of different walks of life, a lot of different things that they're interested in, and so getting that feedback is definitely a benefit.
I think probably what the Edge is most concerned, you know, questioning is, what are we, why are we saying no to some? Because we know that they're looking at the ballot language, and they're bringing all of those to us, but why does this business work and this one doesn't? Why do we say yes to one and no to the other? What's the difference between those? I mean, it's, I don't say, want to say nitpicky, but that's, I think, what they're looking for, is why would we say no? Not what we're saying yes to, we already know what we're saying yes to, why are we saying no as council to those projects?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good point. I think that's, I think we can definitely serve our constituents better by, if we're voting against it, that we're clear as to why. And I think that's something that we want to make sure that as we're discussing this going forward, that we can give that feedback. I know it's tough, I mean, I'm not going to lie, it's not easy to be up here and have people sitting in the audience and, number one, say no to people who are here, that's a big deal even to show up. Some of our meetings run quite late, I blame that on Mike.
We all do, yeah.
But the, but the reality is, I do think that our applicants deserve that feedback. And so I think that's something we definitely want to do better going forward, and I think Edge deserves that feedback. So I would, I guess, encourage that as we get to this next time, that we provide that. I think you're exactly right, Councilwoman Cox. I'd sit here and suggest that we all take some time to talk about the last applicant period, but I don't think we have time. But I will say that as we move forward, for our constituents' sake, for our applicants' sake, for Edge's sake, I think it makes sense, even if it's something as simple as I just don't think it necessarily fits. You know, some things that we haven't approved, for example, it might be because, like Councilman Bailey said, it might be because of optics, it might be because of, you know, it just doesn't feel like it's going to benefit enough people in the community. So there's a lot of different thought processes there, and I think it's, the only way they're going to get them is if we speak up. And so I appreciate Councilman Pronto, who spoke up at our last meeting when we were talking about Edge and kind of saying, "This is my thought process." So I agree.
Your Honor, I guess I have one more thing, and I think, to me, I personally put a little more priority on a project that, I guess, broadly helps the community. For example, the soccer association, or the ice hockey group, or, you know, where that helps bring more people to town, it touches a lot more people than just a certain business, for example. And again, I think the optics are better with the public for those kind of projects than they are for, you know, some individual business, per se.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense, something that brings people in. Councilman Larson, you haven't been chomping at the bit to talk, but if you'd like, everybody else kind of took a turn. I'm not trying to pressure you, but maybe I am.
Kyle and I, Butterfield, had a comment on all of these, and since it's economic development and progress and all of those fancy words, on this column that we have, the amount that we've funded of the 3 million, or the $1,941,000, I asked him if we could find out how many people this, how do we score this? I like, I play numbers in my head all the time on how we score, meaning, how many did we add? And I hear the word $7.35 for a dollar spent, and, but I'm not really interested in theoretical, I just want to know if there are two cars in the garage or zero cars in the garage that we added. By adding two, we added Mike's tire sales, we added somebody's oil sales, we added some repair business, and by telling the numbers of people added to the, to the column that these businesses have brought in... it, it better examines or it explains the improvement to the city of Riverton by way of taxes, by way of improvement, by way of metrics that we can measure. And then we can give weight to one business versus another. Obviously, everything is not equal across the board and assets are very tight. And so we want to, everybody wants to make the right choice, and I think that would help. Thank you.
So if I hear you, you're, you're basically saying we want to be able to look at it critically to see really where is this going to benefit the community?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, there, I read in the, the, a different area, Beds and Heads. And there is one sign in, in Riverton at Main on the left-hand side. It's a huge sign that tells, advertises, it's a neon sign. And, or, I mean, no, it's not a neon sign, it's a LED sign. And so we've, Mike Martin's had funds for that, and he's trying to figure out where to put it, et cetera. And there's nowhere in Riverton, well, I can look on, well, yeah, I don't want to look on. I want to be driving through Riverton and see that there's a rodeo tonight. I want a reason to stop in Riverton. And that information, how we get that out? Well, sure, that's everywhere, but is not available to the driving public. And we're all sign-oriented and we're, we make, we, gee, a chocolate malt would taste good type of individual, and so we stop. And this is, what we're dealing with is tourists. I'm not saying Mike would stop for a chocolate malt, but if it was the right one, he would. And, and so we need information available that would help that.
All right. Appreciate that, appreciate the presentation. Mr. Butterfield, appreciate the opportunity to discuss this at risk of running too far into our finance committee meeting. I guess the takeaway that I intend myself is that as we go forward, I guess for our constituents and for our applicants, whenever we have meetings and approve or disapprove, I'll make sure to kind of give a little bit of a statement as to why, from my standpoint. I think that'd be helpful for the rest of us as well. I think a lot of the pattern, I guess, or the, the common thread that I'm hearing is, is being able to understand that we're wanting to have skin in the game, not in having things fully funded. Edge, I think, already took that feedback to heart last time, and I really appreciate that, and I noticed it. And I guess I would just say that is definitely some guidance that we're wanting to be able to provide. We do have some other possibilities, and we're also going to be discussing the possibility of an MOU that might further address things tonight. But as we go forward, I guess from my standpoint, Mr. Kosarag, we'll make sure you're up. Do you have anything to add tonight, real quick?
Sure, why not?
Take your time.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you guys for having this work session on this stuff. I think it does help a lot. A few things I'd like to talk about on the actual list is, this list looks good. I mean, it's very diverse, there's manufacturing, there's services, there's ways of life, soccer, things like that. So, and I'd like to say that Edge did that, but man, the applicants just made an all-around great list for us. And so I guess we're benefit from that. Just like most economies, it's weird that it kind of trickled down in the beginning. We had big projects like medical, Kafaru, manufacturing, things like that. And then as we've gone through application periods, now we're starting to see more of the service industry and things like that. There was construction kind of in the middle, so almost following economics. I mean, it, it's kind of done it itself. Now, we wrote the bylaws first, we were kind of led by Mayor Guard at the time. We were the first ones to even open an application period. So we were the founders of it, which is really cool. But now, maybe as it's grown, it's time to start looking. We, the grant way was the easy way, it really was, that's how it morphed into it. We'd talked about possible grant writing, using it, hiring a grant writer, trying to get more bang for our buck that way. It would have been difficult, it's also kind of a hard pill to swallow to say, hey, we're going to use taxpayer money to just fund another government job. But it could have doubled it, but again, it just, it went this way because it was probably the easier way. But maybe as it's matured, now it is time to start looking at loans. I know I've talked with Mr. Moore at one time about the interest-free loans, certain projects with capital improvements, things like that, tax liability issues because of capital injections could possibly have very serious tax implement, yeah, consequences versus loans, things like that. So we're open to suggestions. I know the whole point of a committee is to not necessarily be guided by you guys. We do want that second view of the tax dollars, put a little bit of direction every now and then. And that's why I very much appreciate you guys having this work session tonight, and we can go from there. Mr. Larson, Kafaru is the one, it was one of the first ones, it was easy. It was Josh Saltskiver on the Edge Committee does a great job explaining it because of the electrical side, but the amount of business that he got from Kafaru coming in. I, I see where you're saying as far as tangible cars and garages, and Kafaru was an easy one to look at. I mean, it didn't have to get dove into as much because it checked every box so easy. I do hope that we've done our due diligence on the rest, but going forward, we'll take that into mind. Other than that, thank you, guys.
Thank you, and I sure appreciate it and really appreciate your hard work that you guys have been putting in, and, and we see it. And, and you, you've been definitely doing a lot to serve the community, and I agree. I, I was looking at that, this list, and I was struck by just the slice of the community and the slice of the businesses in the community that it, that we've been able to assist.
It couldn't have been more diverse, and like I said, it's a benefit of our applicants, so. I guess it shows how Riverton's doing, like Kevin said, it's, it's looking good.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can keep it going.
All right, well, thank you. Well, so we can get to finance, which is a little bit late, my apologies to the finance chair. Do we have a motion to adjourn the work session tonight?
So moved?
Second.
Councilman Larson with the motion, Councilwoman Borders with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, we are adjourned at six forty-seven.
March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six forty-nine. Chair would enter a motion for the approval of claims.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the finance committee claims to be paid in the amount of five hundred eighty, five hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Manual checks in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Excuse me, can we whisper, thank you. Elon credit card in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Payroll and liabilities for three eight twenty-two thousand and the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of eight hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Do I have a second on this one?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor for the amount of money that the city of Riverton is to be paid out, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, none opposed, motion passes. Do we have any, is there any additions that the committee needs to review or discuss?
No, Your Honor.
There is one interesting thing. The amount that we're paying solid waste keeps on going down. Can you give us an idea of why that is, Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I, I couldn't give you a really good idea of that offhand, but I'd be happy to look at that and.
I mean, it's down from seventy-five thousand down to less than forty thousand. And what, are we doing something with it? We are taking all of our, across the scales, aren't we? That's not in somebody's ravine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to definitely say, yes, we're, we're carrying all the trash across the scale and, and taking it to the dump.
Okay.
It's not in my yard.
Okay. That being in the business to come forth, I adjourn this meeting at six fifty-one. That being in the business to come forth, I adjourn this meeting at six fifty-one.
...regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven oh two P. M. Councilmember Borders has agreed to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which Councilmember Pronto has agreed to give us the invocation. If you would all stand and please remove cover.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, to the citizens, and one nation, in which there is no difference.
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us as we do the will for the people and the citizens of Riverton tonight. Help us satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting and help guide us as we make decisions and sometimes difficult decisions. Father, we pray that we'll be fruitful in doing your will. Guide us so that this meeting can be productive. And Lord, protect and guide all of our first responders, our military, their families, and keep all of them safe. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Administrative Services Director Ms. Harris, if you could please conduct the roll call.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Woman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Tim Hancock.
I am here, and I declare we have a quorum. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as been presented.
So moved.
Second. Councilman Larson with the motion, Councilman Pronto with the second. Any discussion, amendments, or additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Council Committee reports and Council Members Roundtable. If we could start with you, Councilman Pronto.
Oh, boy. Um, all right, so we had the airport, sorry?
And Councilman, I apologize, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
We just did, and we voted on it.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
The motion was from Councilman Larson, the second was from Councilman Pronto.
Your Honor, Councilman, I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay. I lose my place often.
Your Honor, last Friday, we had the Riverton Airport Board Meeting, Central Wyoming Airport Board Meeting. And it was actually quite an agenda. There's actually quite a bit to cover, but what I'll do is I'll just give highlights in the hopes for saving a little bit of time. But there are some updates on the airport lighting problem that we had. It was kind of interesting, but they changed one of the power regulators. Essentially, we have four power regulators up there. One of them is bad. They've moved things around, replaced one, it did not solve the problem, and we're still going through a lot of bulbs. So when the question was asked, like, how many bulbs are we talking about? He said, we could actually lose up to fifty bulbs in a weekend. And I thought that that was a pretty staggering number, especially when you look at the cost of each light bulb, being in that twenty to twenty-five dollar range sometimes. So it's a real problem, they're working on getting that issue resolved, but it's still ongoing. Those regulators have been end-of-life and are over twenty years old, each one's about fifteen thousand dollars. So there's some upcoming investment that needs to be in there. And I think, yeah, the light bulbs are twenty-six dollars apiece. So we have a potential new tenant at the Riverton Airport for food services up there, so that's kind of exciting. If we could reopen the restaurant that's there, that's still in the works, so we won't get into that. But this particular person that's interested, they've opened several restaurants in Jackson and Afton. They worked on training staff at the Casino Rose, so they might actually be a really good person to have in here. They also worked with the Job Corps to develop their restaurant program, so there's a lot of information there. The, there's a potential of moving a flight school to Riverton, and so that's kind of exciting. The new loader is still waiting on the blower attachment that we talked about and the forks, but they're still making good use of that device for now. There's also some discussion about declaring the military aircraft that we have up at the airport and have had up there for what was I've been here, many, many years. It's actually interesting that there's a cost to having that. And the airport is looking at actually returning that back to the Air Force, because in order to keep it, we have to paint it, and then you have to put the appropriate decals, whatever, back on there to make it the same as they used to be. Sorry, my vernacular. But anyway, so there's some discussion about whether to keep it, and if we do keep it, what the costs are involved in doing that. It looks like we're at fifteen hundred and fourteen passengers so far this year, and if we maintain those levels, we will really blow past any previous year. In April, we'll find a change to our schedule, and I believe, and Kyle, you might be able to answer this, is it Sunday and Monday afternoons?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what I thought. So moving from the current schedule to a Sunday, Monday. And then the county commissioners are talking about changing the percentage that they've, that the county has contributed to the airport from twenty percent to thirty percent, which is great news. And with that, Your Honor, that's all I have.
Thank you. That's a lot. Councilwoman Cox.
Your Honor, I haven't been to any meetings since our last meeting, except I snuck in a work session with the Edge Committee just before this meeting. And the main takeaway for me with that was the mention of optics and what our community thinks of our projects. I think that Mr. Lee summed it up well. He said, the money from Edge can be an injection to start a company or give it a boost that it needs. It's not meant to sustain the business itself. The applicants will still need to go out and do the work. This is not a handout. There's a huge process that goes into the consideration for these funds. And I would welcome you and encourage you to come to our next Edge meeting so that you can understand that if you question it. Our next meeting is Thursday at six, but we aren't going to go over applicants then, that will be the second week of April. Also, not really a meeting, but just want to remind everybody that it is soccer season. And Mr. Iggleston and I have been working with the Riverton Youth Soccer Association to try to remind people to slow down down by Ryan Park. We've purchased some signs to put out to maybe slow down, especially on that back road, the dirt road to go to the bigger fields in the back. It is a neighborhood, and there are people in their backyards that aren't in soccer and don't appreciate people driving as fast as they can to drop their kid off to practice. So just a friendly reminder. There's a lot of traffic down there, so you should remember when you're driving down there, there's lots of little kids at five-thirty every night for soccer, so please be cautious and slow down. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I again was at the Airport Board Meeting with Councilman Pronto. And again, the airport's really looking good. Our, I think our increase January and February over last year was a couple hundred people per month. So again, we're on a good track to exceed the best year we've ever seen at the airport. And again, the more people fly, the more chance we have of getting additional midday flights, for example. And so, again, use it or we're going to lose it, kind of a thing, so. I think the airport's a huge economic driver for the community. There's a lot of things that come and go through that airport, and it helps the overall community very much, so. The other meeting that I attended was this last Friday, the Force Committee meeting, or other way around. Monday was Force Committee, Friday was the Airport Board. Again, the, they've got some bids that were out that we have already approved for some projects. They're going to be working on Major Avenue and College View with some fairly major repairs, they're going to road mill those streets. A portion of College View and almost all of Major is going to get road milled out, you know, re-based and then paved. Again, a lot of traffic on there. And then there's another almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of pavement preservation, which is slurry seal, chip sealing, that kind of stuff that they're going to be doing around town. And those bids come in very competitive, less than we were expected, so with a little luck, we'll probably have a little money to do some additional projects before the summer's over, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Borders.
Your Honor, I missed the pause meeting tonight because Edge, we had our work session, so. But they did want me to convey that they're working on several different projects. There's a spring concert that they're bringing to town and Elton John impersonators, so watch for that, that should be fun. Let's see, what else? They're looking at possibly raising the rates for, what the heck do I want to call it? Just one second.
Adoption?
Annuption.
No. No, the surrender fees when they, when they take in an animal, so that, that's going to be in the works. We had finance committee earlier, and I'll let Kyle tell you about that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilman Larson.
We attended Solid Waste yesterday, and Dubois Receiving Station is a hundred percent complete. I know, we're Riverton, but that's what was discussed. The Lander facility is about fifty percent complete, and the sand drawl has been let, and that will start as soon as we decide when spring is going to start. The day you decide that, the next day it snows. Anyway, and that was awarded to a local contractor here in Riverton. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Salisbury.
Hello. I thought maybe Councilman Bailey would remind everybody about the Ball Gowns and Badges event on Saturday, May fourth, with the Fremont County Law Enforcement Foundation. And it's fifty dollars per plate or eight hundred dollars per table. And if you can't make the event, you can go on to their website and just donate. I appreciate the efforts from the community to help support our law enforcement. And that's all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Salisbury. And I guess I would, it's going to be, the event, of course, ball gowns and badges, and then they're going to have an auction there, as I understand it. And so I guess part of what I'm saying is, is if you're attending, it's not just that you're paying fifty dollars a plate, you're able to get the event, but also can support with getting some things on the auction as well, so. And thank you very much, Fremont County Law Enforcement Fund. All right. Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few items to bring up. It's already been referenced, but there is an Edge Committee meeting this Thursday at six o'clock here at City Hall. And we do encourage anyone in the public to attend that. There's also a Planning Commission meeting this Thursday, also at City Hall at five-thirty. And there will be a review of some applications and specifically home occupation permits. It's already been reported on the Airport Board Meeting and the Force Meeting, and I don't need to, I think, add to that, but we do appreciate each of those boards for what they're doing and the service they're providing. I also like to highlight the work session that preceded this meeting, and I want to thank you for coming early. Want to thank our Edge Committee members and the community that participated in that. And specifically, Cy Lee and Kevin Kershiznik. We're so lucky to have those two individuals in our community. They have a wealth of knowledge and expertise, but more importantly, they have passion for the community. So I want to say thank you to them publicly for reviewing economic development principles with you. And obviously, as a council, if you want to have further discussion as it relates to the half percent fund, we can schedule another work session. But I do believe that that was a valuable conversation, and we do encourage folks to engage in the half cent program for those that are interested to apply, as the application period is currently open. And again, council, thank you for meeting early and performing that work session. Your Honor, I think the last thing that I would do is I'd like to turn some time to Chief Hurtado. At the last business meeting, there was public comment and some questions, is it related to the Police Department and some statistics? And Mr. Hurtado has agreed to reply to that and provide some information. I'd also like to state that should anyone in the community have questions, they're always willing to meet with me, they're willing to call City Hall, I mean, with any of us, because we do want to be responsive and provide information that we do have. So, Your Honor, if it's okay, I'll defer to Mr. Hurtado to finish up my report.
Thank you. Chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to mention some things that have been going on with the Police Department and kind of explain where we have been and where we're going. For those that know, we have created a Fremont County DUI Task Force. From what I understand, this is the first of its kind in the state, and there's other counties that are looking at trying to model what we've been able to do here in the county. And thanks to Chief Peters in Lander with creating this. And when I first started a few months ago, came to me and asked my opinion, what I thought it was, and I was, I was for it. We had, I've been part of other task force teams in the past, and they are a force multiplier. They're used efficiently, and they help reduce crime. This last weekend, we had another DUI Task Force operation here in town. We've had several since we started the oper, or Task Force in the fall. And this is basically an intercooperation between all the law enforcement agencies in the county. Usually you have jurisdiction up to your city limits, and this allows us to cross those limits and perform law enforcement and other agencies, adjoining agencies. So this last weekend, we had seven officers from Lander, Shoshone, and the county come here, and with our officers, we did- And with our officers, we did 134 stops for traffic violators, made 14 arrests and issued 33 citations. It's not possible without the complete cooperation with the other cities, towns, the chiefs, sheriff, all getting together and having a common cause, common belief that we can reduce crime, we can reduce the amount of deaths related to DUI-related traffic accidents. And lots of times during our operations, when we do have several officers out there in the field, inherently, it reduces the call volume for the police department. It does happen here and we're glad to have this MOU in place and we're going to continue this as long as the money's there from the state. Everyone knows that there's times of the year, especially this last week, where warmer weather seems to stir up heated moments in town. This week it started. So I'm glad to announce that we've been working with the sheriff's office to provide extra coverage this last summer when we had needed additional officers. And starting this month, actually this week, you'll start seeing the sheriff's office and Shoshone Police Department officers helping us during our peak times here in Riverton. And relating to the additional officers, we need to understand that this isn't unique to Riverton. There's a national shortage for a lot of professionals. And those professionals are teachers, healthcare providers, there are doctors, our officers and EMTs. They're hiring, you know, 365. There's, there's not enough viable applicants that are out there trying to get into these fields because it's very challenging. When I started, we, we looked at our hiring practices. You know, traditionally, we would advertise locally on our local website and we would get a few applicants and help this maintain some level of staffing. When I looked at that and we started to see the numbers not being able to keep up, we changed our strategy. And what we've now done is looked at other states who may have officers that are looking maybe to, to change. In my experience, law enforcement officers start looking after about three years, like, does this really want to stay where I want to go? And about seven years, they got that seven-year itch, like, is this where I want to retire? Is this where I want to keep my family? That's common. Everybody, you ask any officer, three to seven years, they're, they're looking to see if this is where I want to spend my career. As we went out and started advertising nationally for our police department here, we've seen an increase in the number of applicants that are interested in coming here. And with that, I want to share you, with you some of the numbers. Three years ago, through our, our traditional methods, we had 31 applicants that applied as for police officer positions here. Two years ago, there was 26 applicants that, that applied. A year ago, there was 38. Since we changed the strategy and we're looking at other states, we're now getting applications where other officers who are looking at that scenery change, that have 10-plus years' experience and have seen what is out there about Riverton being the ideal place to retire. And they still have 10, 15 years of viable service that they can do in law enforcement. So they're looking at our police department to, as that career change move. This last 12, 12 months, I haven't been here quite a year, that comparative traditional way of recruiting, I said, was 38. And as of today, we've almost doubled. We're at 70 applications that have come in to try to fill our positions. I came from a, started my career in a very large department. We had 2,000 applicants show up and take the written test. Out of that, about half would pass the, the written test, the PT test, and would go on to an oral board. By the time those 2,000 came down to actually going first day of the academy, we're down to 30. So the numbers are, are really out there, but it's a hard profession to get into. It's professional. Think of it as, and I always refer to the medical field, do you want to go to the emergency room where your doctor and, and see somebody that just started med school, it's like, okay, now I have to insert this needle here? Hold on.
Tim Conway.
Sure, half the room know who you're talking about. But our professional officers, we want to keep. They have a lot of obligation. We invest a lot of training and ideally, we want to keep them and we want to have the highly trained, high pride department. With, with those numbers, like I said, we had 70 come out and actually apply. Those that actually show up and show for the PT test, we had, out of that 70, this last 11 months, only 21 actually showed up for the testing. Out of the 21, I'm glad to say, as of today, we have six applicants and backgrounds for police officer positions with our department. We do have additional openings. I had several interviews all day today. I made a job offer to an applicant today for our Community Service Officer Program. And we had three additional interviews for the, for the other position. And this lasts, yesterday, we had additional interviews for a police dispatcher. In the, in the last couple of months, we've been busy doing background checks just because somebody is able to run the mile so fast and be able to do so many push-ups, so many sit-ups, we want to make sure that we have high-quality officers. Not everybody can pass a background test. They have to go through psychological testing, check with neighbors. There's, there's a lot of detail that we want to make sure that when we bring our officers on board, we're getting the best that, that we can. And we're not going to sell ourselves short with that. So we're going to keep going with a high-quality officer that we deserve here as a community. I know that some, there's some questions that came up a couple of weeks ago. There were some items that were covered in the February PowerPoint for the annual review of the police department. We had the opportunity for all our supervisors to come in, explain what their roles are in the department and some statistics that they provided for counsel in the community. Some of the, the high points, in 2021, we had 766 intoxication-related request respond for officers to, to check out reported intoxicated persons. In 2022, that number went down to 556 and last year went down to 450. It can be for a number of reasons. I like to think of it that because we are trying to get a high visibility presence in our community, that maybe people aren't acting up as, as much as they used to. There is, there has been an increase in shoplifting from years past in 2023, but, and maybe the mayor can help me out on, on this new, I think it's the fourth time for a shoplifter, uplifting, fifth time. It is now a felony. And so we want to see those numbers, how it's going to affect our 2024 numbers because it has just gotten to affect this last year. So that would give us a good look at how that law is affected. And I know that we've get a lot of complaints of, of people shoplifting, loitering. Counsel was able to pass a no-loitering ordinance that gives us, the officers more ammunition to look and investigate crimes before they occur. Other than that, many of the items that are available is, has the PowerPoint from January or February of this year. I believe the local media has copies of it and we can make it available for anybody that wants a copy. Our number, the last thing, Your Honor, is just the call volume I want to just touch up on. In 2019, we had over 10,600 calls for service. And that could be anything from, you know, the neighbor's dog is barking, which our animal control officer will respond to, homicide, sexual assaults, thefts, encompasses everything. In 2020, that number kind of stayed the same and slowly, it's been going down. And in 2023, the calls went up about one and a quarter calls a day. So 900, 9,700 calls in 2023, which was about a 500 difference from the year before. So one call a day. We're going to look to see what our numbers are for 2024. I like to think that because the community is more involved, they'll see officers responding to calls and they'll be more active. And maybe they can see that once they call the police department, we'll send an officer out. They'll see that we're more responsive and maybe actually this, I would anticipate this next year, you'll see more calls, but not because of maybe the crime is bigger, but more people are getting involved in, in reporting what they see as, as far as suspicious activity. With that, Your Honor, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I'll make my comments as brief as I can. I guess just in looking at the statistics you had shared, Chief, we've had quite an increase in shoplifting, but then we had quite a decrease in theft from vehicles. So interesting how those things go. I, I guess what I would encourage folks to do, and this is probably a perennial reminder, is to lock your vehicles. That's the best way to ensure that you're not going to have your vehicle stolen or have the items in your vehicle stolen. So I, I would highly encourage that and I think probably that's the thing I would attribute most to that reduction in thefts from vehicles is I hope that message is getting across that we're keeping our vehicles locked when we're not in them. If you can't tell from my voice, I caught a virus about a week and a half ago. I've sounded like this for about that long. I'm sure it will end someday, but it's not very fun. I had the opportunity to participate in the jackalope jump. That was a lot of fun. We also have it in Lander this next weekend. So if you have a hankering for jumping in cold water on a fairly cold day, I would encourage you to drive to Lander this Saturday and you can do that. It is a fun opportunity to support the special Olympic athletes that we have from our community. Had an opportunity to go to the Lander luncheon for the chamber, the Lander Chamber, and they talked about Edge. They presented the results of a study that was done by the University of Wyoming regarding Edge Funds. Very educational, good opportunity, and I appreciate that being put on. It was very well done. And the food was good, too. I have had the opportunity last night to go see Peter Pan. We are very lucky here that we have a very active art community. If you look, we have, we try to have art on our buildings. We have the Robert A. Peck Art Center, our theater, that is just a great addition to the community. It has been practically my whole life. I would strongly encourage you to support the theater. It's a great opportunity. We have a lot of people in our community that put a lot of work into the productions. I've gone to productions there where I wasn't able to hear things very well. I've gone to productions that are very professional, well-done, I can hear things, and this is definitely one that I really enjoyed. They've done a, a top-notch job on putting together Peter Pan. And if you want to see people flying through the air on wires, then I strongly encourage it. They don't come into the audience, so nobody's going to land on your head. But it was a very fun production and I really appreciate all the work that CWC has put into that and the community members. They're going to be doing a musical called Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat this summer. If you're interested and you have some time, I would encourage you to audition. They need a lot of men. I don't know if you remember the story, but there's 12 brothers, so they need 12 men and, and more than that because they're still the Pharaoh and Hadefer and all that. So it, it's a good time and, and I would encourage you to go this, this weekend, they're going to have more, they're going to have the play again. I think Friday, they're going to have three shows. So they're going to be working very hard and it, it's, it's just a good time. So I think that's really all I have to report on. Communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled on the agenda, please feel free to come up during that agenda item and, and you can be recognized and, and you could be heard then. However, if you'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda and particularly isn't set for a public hearing, this would be the time to come up. I'd ask you to keep your comments to five minutes for individuals, 10 minutes for groups. Figure it out ahead of time, everybody in your group, so that you can take up 10 minutes total. As you come up, I'd ask you to identify yourself by name and if you're with an organization, the organization that you're with. And now would be the time to come up if you would like to speak.
My name is Carol Harper and I am here to speak on the subject of the Y, the Y Chamber Commissioners and Visitor Center. At this time, I just want to say that I am not speaking on behalf of any group or organization. I sit on quite a few boards, but I'm just speaking as a citizen tonight. I stood up here two years ago and told you all that the chamber was making decisions, and I quote myself, "in back rooms, behind closed doors," and I was out of the team. I asked questions and I got no response or was ignored. When I was questioned, process is happening without oversight. I got ambiguous responses or was ignored, unquote. I quit the chamber and the chamber ambassadors, which has been dissolved since because of that very thing, no oversight. They revised and created their own bylaws behind closed doors with no oversight or even a vote from their membership. So those bylaws should have been null and void this entire time. So this will go back to the two years ago when I said something that wasn't right, that you can't just pass something as significant as bylaws without a vote and you can't just solicit and take people's money and do whatever you want with it. The city council liaisons for the chamber all sit up here in a roundtable and talk about all the great things the chamber does for Riverton, but no one wants to talk about the questionable things. The chamber recently boasted on one of their Facebook pages about some businesses that seem to have bailed them out, one of which was Mike Bailey. And he sits on the city council and is the chamber's liaison. Is this or is this not a conflict of interest, given the recent audit? Regardless of this, what values or incentives is the chamber even able to provide for any member that joins now if they have no money or even able to pay their staff or rent or an office or even have a copy machine? I've spoken to many business owners and past chamber members who tell me that they received no value or incentives for being a chamber member. $5,000 is a chamber's top-tier membership. What does $5,000 get you? Gone are the... Gone are the days when folks even really care if you're a high tier member of a business organization, for a prestigious organization, a sticker, a logo for your or on a banner and a certificate hanging on the wall. With the emergence of social media and now AI, many of the successful businesses and organizations post and share on their Facebook walls. And Go Riverton has, they have their own marketing and they have their own marketing pretty much down there and I share them on Go Riverton. It's awareness and promotion of their products and services that they need the most. So what is the chamber doing there, especially for $5,000? Additionally, there are two chamber websites, rivertonchamber.org and yriverton.com. When I was with the chamber ambassadors, the new website costs $40,000. I recently found out that their website is now costing them $1,500 a month and is basically a static site for tourism. $1,500, which is $18,000 a year. I charge $300 per year for a static website and that works out to $25 a month. Plus any clients get promo on Go Riverton. Also something that the Facebook, about, there are four Facebook pages for the chamber, Y Riverton, Riverton Y Chamber, Y Riverton and Riverton Chamber of Commerce. Which one of these pages does the chamber post and promote on a daily basis, weekly or monthly? Five executive directors in five years. It seems to me that the directors are nothing but puppets to do the executive board's bidding. But when one stands up for what is right and calls them out on their discrepancies and bad business practices, what happens? As far as best business practices, the chamber's current vice president and now interim director should know better as she has a background in banking and she also sits on the Wind River Visitors Council itself. To claim ignorance and that everything is now copasetic is simply the narrative that has been created for the press in an attempt to put up a good light, them in a good light. Additionally, the same person has been going around the businesses bribing them to join the chamber. This act of desperation is pitiful because again, besides the bribe, where's the value? Why should I join? This person is also on other boards, including your newly formed Community Development Committee. She's also going around the county with Kevin Krasznik about the half cent sales tax for Florida and Fremont County. Even though I agree and support the half cent, I will not vote for it for exactly the same reasons I've stated. No effective voter site and no confidence in the people on the committees that decide how the funding is awarded and dispersed. After all, if this is how TAD funds are treated, how can I have full faith and confidence in how Edge funds are and will be managed? The definition of embezzlement is theft or misappropriation of funds placed in one's trust or belonging to one's employer. The chamber cannot just claim that the left hand did not know what the right hand was doing. Someone knew and she came forward. Embezzlement, whether it's across state lines or from one county account to another, is a federal offense. And because someone came forward to question it and was fired for it, that is called a cover up and wrongful termination. What if she hadn't come forward? I personally think that the chamber should be dissolved and every board member who voted with our executive board for the past two years should resign or be investigated. But realistically, I know that will never happen because that's not the way things work here in Riverton. Investigations that includes certain individuals or have the right last name and have like parents, end up like parents defending their bully children before a principal. The most they'll get is a slap on the wrist and a warning. And not because jails are full or because they have the wrong last name. It's because the gaslighting includes all the chamber does for the city and the community. Pay no attention to who's behind the curtain. And where is the chamber? At the Heritage Center on Main Street? The chamber doesn't even have a locale or center for tourists and visitors, which is the primary purpose. You'd think that they'd be able to find a place and stay put. When do they meet? What do they do? Besides the TAD money, where's the membership money really going? How has the chamber been helping the businesses of Riverton? They haven't. It needs to be dissolved and it's sad. Over two years ago, I had some element of hope, excuse me, I had some element of hope for the chamber until I found out how they practiced. I spoke out about their lack of transparency and accountability and I was ignored. So this time around, I hope I won't be. I hope that the chamber members, past and present, and Riverton business owners will step up and do and say something, not nothing. If you haven't received value for your membership or you were bribed into joining or believed that the promises of ambiguous economic development plans that didn't include or don't benefit you, demand your money back. Change will never happen if you do nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
Well, I'll go next. I didn't write anything down, but I'm going to wing it a little bit. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mr. Tiffany. Well, my driver's license says Damian Cortez. I am the husband of the very recently dismissed director of the chamber. And I stand here today not as the husband of this very, very special lady. I stand here as a citizen. I stand here as someone who had heard bad things about the chamber. Heck, everyone she spoke to that we knew when she said she was applying for the job said, "I'd be careful about that." She took the job anyway. And in doing so, she met some amazing people in this town, person after person, business after business that pushed this town, people who have been in business here for 70 years. Okay? This town is filled with amazing, really cool businesses. And I think it's terrible that the closed door Machiavellian clandestine behavior of a few members of the board are tarnishing Riverton's reputation. This is a great town. I moved here from a place that has as many problems as anybody, any place. Okay? Nothing like what I have seen. This is like an episode of television. I mean, moving tax dollars, my 12-year-old children understand co-mingling. Okay? Moving those tax dollars blatantly and hiding it from your director, lying about meetings, about when they're happening, holding meetings without the people who are supposed to be there. When she raised the concern to the rest of the board about the actions of the executive board, the board met without any investigation, without following any sort of protocol or process to make sure they had the entire story. Okay? They told, as far as I understand, Mr. Bailey is still a voting member of the chamber board, but he was not included in that meeting. Al Malah was not in that meeting, but the rest of them were. And in doing so, in firing her and choosing to support the egregious actions of the executive board, and as far as I can tell, and I'll let the prosecutors do their job, but as far as I can tell, the illegal actions of the executive board, by supporting them, they're complicit in this. I would recommend that the city government and the businesses of this city remove the entire board with the exception of Mr. Bailey and Al Malah, rehire my wife and under their leadership, build a new board and a new chamber and a new legacy for this organization in Riverton.
I brought my glasses today. I can read. Respectfully, Mayor, Council, Brett Johnson. I was looking at the agenda. Is this the appropriate time to talk about the chamber? Because there is something down the line about the chamber. Is there going to be this type of discussion with that as well?
You're welcome to speak, Ms. Harper.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I want to thank Kristy Salzberry for that Fremont County Law Enforcement Foundation plug there. That was great. We're doing awesome. Just a quick update. We got a big gun safe from Murdochs donated. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a great event, but on to the chamber. I'm here tonight to speak about the Chamber of Commerce's issue that's been covered all over the news and social media regarding the contract for services budget with the recommendation to advance funding to the Riverton Chamber of Commerce to help it over the cash flow It's about the most understated thing I think I've read all week. As a resident of this town and someone who is paying attention to what's going on, I strongly suggest that they don't receive any kind of advancement, any kind of funding for the following reasons. I don't get that kind of, I mean, the chamber is run as a business from what I understand. They have to do their own recruiting, make their own money. If I was to do that with my business, isn't anybody going to give me any kind of an advancement? I'm just going to lose my business. Okay? The mistake that Judy Bowler said she made, that the board made when they transferred $1,800 from TAD to the operating accounts, they did so without your approval, which I believe was in the MOU. They have to have that. When the director found the discrepancy, it was brought to light and she was fired. Why are we firing the person who brought it to light? Why aren't we firing the person who did it wrongfully? Board members, get rid of them. Get rid of them. They're not doing it right. To fire the director who brings this to light screams cover up. I'm echoing a few things you say, so I'm sorry. I've got it written down here. I don't want to lose my place, but it's got a lawsuit written all over it is what it's got. So the mistake that they made, that they put in, County 10, Riverton Ranger, all that, I want to know why she was fired. What's the reason? What's the reason that she was fired? What did she do wrong? Honestly? I don't know. And I hope somebody tells us sometime. I really do. She admitted wrongdoing in all the articles that I'm reading, which in some aspects of Wyoming law, misappropriation of funds is a felony. Clearly this board doesn't know what they're doing when they fired Cortez or it was a cover up for money and to prevent it to be made public. We got this information early before some news organizations did and I couldn't believe it. I was like, no, it can't be, can't be right, can't be real, but it was. Who else was involved in the transfer? With my foundation, we have to have at least two people to move money. I would like to know who else was involved in that transfer. That's meant for tourism, not paying employees. I strongly suggest that those who did the transfer are removed from the board and not allowed on any other kind of board that involves taxpayers' money. Because if anybody deserves to be removed, it's those people and not Tiffany Cortez. If these funds are granted to the chamber, these advanced funds, who technically is their own business and simply distributes TAD funds, you're going to be setting a precedence that any business who helps with tourism can come to the city, request bailout money for mismanagement of their own funds. I would love for the city to act appropriately and investigate it thoroughly. I don't believe that the board members that were involved in this moving of the money can be trusted. These people represent the city of Riverton and the business community, which brings me to another point, except for mine, because I was told that I'm on a no contact list with the Chamber of Commerce. My business is on a no contact list with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know why. I've never been approached by the Chamber of Commerce. My wife's never been approached by the Chamber of Commerce and we're in our third year of business and our business is literally in the heart of town, right in the middle. Would like to know what we did to be put on the old blacklist from the Chamber of Commerce. Where's the fairness? Why aren't they out recruiting, finding their customers just like every other business has to do in this town? I am a proud member of Step Up Riverton. Here's my suspicion to why we're on the no contact list. I'm a proud member of Step Up Riverton and we are a group who tackles really hard topics. We ask the hard questions. These topics are not always popular, but they need to be talked about. I had been advised in a prior meeting that you attended, Mr. Mayor, Julie Bowler was present, that she called Step Up Riverton the negative group. If supporting law enforcement in this town is considered negative, then I guess that's what we are. Because that's where the whole movement started, supporting law enforcement. 100% of everything Step Up does supports that department and now with FCLF, the entire county of law enforcement. Julie Bowler was the one who said, I was told, that Step Up Riverton was the negative group. It's so inappropriate for her to say, given her position at the chamber. And I would hope that in future meetings, if any of you are in there and somebody does that, that you wouldn't allow it. Step Up Riverton is here to ensure that local officials are transparent and held accountable. If that makes us negative, so be it. If the city of Riverton supports a business that badmouths routinely other businesses that they're not in line with is unacceptable. I talked with a business owner today, and this is a former politician, who told me as soon as Julie Bowler got involved with the chamber, he was done. He stopped paying his dues. He ripped the sticker off the window on the front door. This, I really respect this person. He's been a very good politician in our county and cities for a long time. And for him to say something like that indicates to me, there isn't a problem with the director's position, there's a leadership problem in the board. I'm trusting you as the mayor and council and oversight for these TAD funds to find that leadership issue and resolve it immediately. This is not how business is done. And for the excuse of, well, we just didn't know, we made a mistake. Well, Ms. Cortez paid for that mistake.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Angel Arnold. I've been a resident of this county and more specifically Riverton for over 20 years. I stand before you to discuss a matter that is clearly of great concern, the allocation of further funding to the Chamber of Commerce. It's come to light that this institution is trusted with the responsibility of promoting economic growth and development in our city, has engaged in what is at best underhand practices with TAD funds. Even more alarming is the revelation that one particular individual has been both on the giving and receiving end of these funds. This raises serious questions regarding the integrity and ethics of the chamber. How can we consider continuing to fund an organization that has embroiled in such questionable practices? The lodging tax was to be used specifically for tourism, which is in stark contrast to the reality that we've been made aware of. These funds are meant to be allocated towards projects that benefit all the residents. And the actions of those individuals betray the trust that the individuals or that the citizens and businesses placed in the hands of the chamber. Admittedly, the chamber misappropriated those funds and they didn't know that they had to ask permission to use money that isn't theirs. Whether intentional or not, ignorance can't be an excuse for what is at the very least morally wrong. We didn't know what we were doing was wrong isn't an acceptable excuse from anybody else. So why is it acceptable from the chamber and the board? It's also unacceptable for the chamber to claim on a public platform that they've always been honest and transparent when recent ongoings prove otherwise. Where did the money go? Where is it coming from now? And if they were able to rebuild the account so quickly, why did they resort to taking from the TAD funds in the first place instead of hitting the streets and recruiting members like they have been over the last week? We deserve answers to these questions, real answers. We're tired of seeing things swept under the rug because of who you are and who you know. The good old boy system is played out, has been exposed, and we demand accountability. Our community thrives when it comes together to work towards common goals. I've seen it firsthand. The betterment of our city and well-being of our citizens. The betterment of our city and well-being of our citizens and businesses can only be achieved if we have faith in the institutions that govern us. We demand a higher standard of integrity. It's your duty as representatives of the people, your people, to hold the Chamber accountable. Demand answers. Demand change. Demand a Chamber of Commerce that operates with integrity and a genuine commitment to our city, not back alley practices and closed-door dealings. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Administrative Services Director, Mrs. Harris, if you could please read the consent agenda items by title only.
Thank you, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, March 5th, 2024, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, March 19th, 2024, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, March 19th, 2024. Approval of the Municipal Court report for the month of February 2024.
Thank you. Are there any other items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, Finance Committee met earlier this, I can't remember if it was today, yesterday, or last week, but we met. And there will be a change in the consideration. We had initial one, and then there was an addendum added in to be paid five hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Manual checks in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. E-Lon credit card in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three, twenty-seven. Payroll and liabilities through March 8th in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents for a total of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, sixty-eight cents.
All right, and just to clarify, payroll and liabilities, was that two thirty-one, one twenty-one or four twenty-one?
Payroll and liabilities was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I had it right. I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders with the motion, Councilman Bailey with the second. Any discussion or amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Tips Training presented. City Administrator's Report, or Ms. Groom Smith, or?
Your Honor, I think it'd be great if we just deferred to Ms. Groom Smith. We really appreciate her being here and look forward to the information she's going to be providing about this program.
Thank you. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor and council, and thank you, Mr. Butterfield, for inviting me. My name is Tana Groom Smith. I am the Director of Fremont County Prevention Program. I work for the county. There's been some questions about what tips training, responsible beverage server training is, and so I've come here to share that with you. First, I want to start by letting you know that actually seventy percent of adults in the United States use alcohol. About seventy-nine and a half percent of Wyoming citizens here drink responsibly. Now, we don't know what the data is for Fremont County. A lot of people have guesses, right? However, I just want to let you know that in 2020, according to the National Institute on Alcohol Abuse and Alcoholism, Wyoming is ranked tenth highest among the states for adults who drink excessively at twenty point five percent of the population. You may have questions about our youth here in Fremont County, and I have good news for you. According to the 2022 PNA, which is the Prevention Needs Assessment, twenty-one point six, this is not the good news. Twenty-one point six percent of our youth said that alcohol is easy to get. But those who drank one or more times in the thirty days prior to completing that survey said that they got the alcohol from their parents or an adult twenty-one years or older. So tips, responsible beverage server training, or tips means training for intervention procedures, is all about helping servers know how to check properly for ID, but also helps them create and sustain a welcoming, comfortable atmosphere for their guests. In other words, not a bunch of intoxicated people in, in the establishment. It helps them learn how to exercise a degree of control within the environment of social drinking, influencing the aspects of drinking behavior so their guests don't become overly intoxicated. What they learn out actually are the behavioral cues, how alcohol affects their patrons, and what signs they might expect to see in a progressive as their customers drink. Also, the intoxication rate factors, which has a lot to do with size, gender, rate of consumption, strength of the drink, drug use, or food intake. We also teach them, like I said, how to properly check IDs. There are all sorts of things that actually need to be checked when you're looking at an ID, whether or not it has the proper information on it, whether or not all of it, all of the fonts are the same, et cetera. We have learned that there have been some fake IDs floating around Riverton here, so actually, two of the establishments in Riverton here have borrowed ID scanners from our prevention program, and they've been working, which we think is really pretty cool. They learn effective server responses using suggested guidelines and making reasonable effort to handle problem situations. We also teach them about Wyoming jurisdiction laws. I don't know what else to tell you. I'd love to have questions. I can say that since November of 2018, I have trained a hundred and eighty-nine people here in Fremont County. Of those hundred and eighty-nine people, eighty-five percent of them say in the post-survey that they believe that tips training should be required. So this is a participant manual that they get along with rules and regulations for Wyoming. And then we also talk about jurisdiction-specific regulations. I'd love to answer questions.
I guess I have one. How long does the training last?
Thank you for asking that. Four to five hours. It depends upon how large the class is and how interactive it is. I mean, it is a skills-based training. So we actually go into problem scenarios and talk about them and work through them. It depends on how interactive the group is and how large the group is.
Do you do like a wet lab like law enforcement does where people get drunk?
No, we actually, we actually view videos, and they get to evaluate whether or not the guest is intoxicated or perhaps an underage individual or... And we talk about the behavioral cues, the things they see. You know, loss of inhibition or slowed reactions, or we really get down to the the behavioral cues that a person who has been drinking shows.
And how many did you say you had done over the last year?
I have trained a hundred and eighty-nine individual, oh, over the last year. I'm, I can edit it up for you. I brought it. Well, I have this whole list here.
Gotcha. A lot, more than ten?
Yeah, more than ten. The largest group that I've had is twenty, and the smallest group is three. Three is a very fun group, but it's better, I believe, for participants if we have at least six. And I can say, which is really very cool, is I'm now on my third generation. People are certified for three years. Once they've completed their exam and pass, they're certified for three years, and I've had, you know, people come back to be trained again once their certification expires.
Well, I, what's prompted having you come here today was the Fremont County DUI Task Force, so when, when that phrase is used, it can mean a lot of different things, but it's really a group of individuals of which you're a member and I'm a member.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bailey came, actually, was it last meeting or the one before?
One before, yeah.
One of the discussions we had a couple of months ago was the possibility of having tips training as a requirement for folks that have a liquor license, whether packaged or restaurant or whatever. And so I had asked Ms. Harris, is that something that's a possibility? Are there other communities that do that? And there are other communities that do that as a part of the licensure requirement. They'd require that the the license holder provide proof or indicate that they have all of their individuals trained. And so I want to be clear, do you charge for the training?
No, sir. That's part of my program.
And because we all know there's no such thing as a free lunch, how is that paid for then?
The Community Prevention Grant pays for the materials and my time. The Community Prevention Grant comes from the state of Wyoming to the commissioners who then facilitate, they're the fiscal agent for the Community Prevention Grant. But the monies actually come from the federal government, CDC and SAMPA, to the state, then to the county, which provides the program.
So if this were a requirement that we had here, there would be no charge. It would just be finding a time to do it. How often do you do the training?
Actually, I will do them as often as people call me and say they want one. I have done trainings for Walmart because they wanted it. Brown Sugar Coffee wants a training, so I'll be providing training specific for theirs. However, I did just do one on the fifteenth, and I had three different establishments attend. I'll be doing one in Lander April nineteenth for anyone that wants to come.
Well, I guess the question then is, is, I mean, is this something that is a council? Do we want to consider that? Do we want to at least talk about it? I mean, have a public meeting, be able to have folks come and talk about it and give pros and cons?
Well, I think you're, you need to get the involvement of the taverns owners involved because they're gonna, as Mike does, try it, try to hire people. And right now, that's a little difficult, but if we invoke some training procedures, then we've got to pass a law that they've got to have it after a certain date versus before a certain date. And, but we need something like that.
Your Honor, I have liquor licenses in other towns, so I don't get to use your services, but we use tips training with our employees that work in the facilities that have alcohol and tobacco, and it all falls into the same kind of a scenario, but I think it's very valuable. I think it gives the employees good tools to be able to use, to be able to prevent people from buying alcohol that are intoxicated or not of age or whatever. And I think it really helps them follow the rules better. And I mean, we have a zero tolerance. I mean, if somebody gets caught in a sting, they lose their job. So I mean, we try to incentivize them to do their job properly. And I think that's the responsible thing to do. And I think overall, the industry does a pretty good job overall, like your stats were telling us. I think a lot of this underage drinking is coming from other adults providing liquor to people that they shouldn't be. And so we need to educate them too, but I think, I think it's a positive thing. I think we could, you know, create an environment where we can get the liquor license owners in and talk about it, and I, I think it would be a positive thing for the industry overall, so in the city, so thanks.
Councilwoman Cox?
Your Honor, I was just wondering, it sounds like with the numbers that you have already, are most of the establishments establishments already using this, or is it just a few that are having new, new employees keep going back? Or I'm just wondering if it's going to be much of a difference for our establishments if they're already doing it?
It will be.
Okay.
I don't want to rat anyone out.
Tana Groom Smith, not a snitch.
Noted.
Noted. Write that down. We'll put it in the minutes here. All right, well, I appreciate you coming in and telling us a little bit about the training.
Certainly.
I, I just, I figured it'd be good for people to meet you. So people know Tana, rather than, other than doing tips, is very involved in a lot of different things. She's currently a big part of trying to figure out what to do with the opioid crisis funding for the county. We're in the middle of that process ourselves. And I, I feel like just about every third meeting I go to, you're there, so.
That's about true.
In case you see her, now you know who she is, and I think definitely something we can continue to discuss and just wanted to get a little bit of an introduction, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Contract for Services Amendment. I almost could have done this first and just had it so that it'd be smoother from the City Administrator's Report, Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. As recently discussed with Eagle's Hope, the city of Riverton receives direct distribution from the state of Wyoming. And each year, you as a council prioritize a percentage of those funds to go towards community organizations, specifically organizations that benefit the community. These organizations are separate of the city, and the city does not provide oversight of these organizations. However, the city does see them as valuable and therefore, in fiscal year 24, allocated or budgeted two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars towards the Community Contracts Program. In your packet, it lists those that were awarded. The Chamber requested fifty thousand dollars from the council when the Community Contract Service Funds were advertised about a year ago. Through the budget process, the city council considered their application and awarded them sixteen thousand dollars or thirty-two percent of its request. The service agreement that is included in your packet denotes that the award would be paid out in quarterly installments. The amendment before you allows for the fourth quarter distribution to occur earlier. And really, it would only be by a few weeks. It would occur this month. And it would be in the amount that the city council has already considered and approved. The city has longtime supported the Chamber through the Contract for Services Program, and it's interesting, I've also found agreements even predating the Contract for Service Program where the city did see value in a Chamber of Commerce and also in supporting a Chamber of Commerce. So in the spirit of, of supporting the Chamber of Commerce, staff does recommend that Amendment One be approved and that the already approved allocation for the fourth quarter be provided early. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. I guess before we, we get into this, just I guess for the purposes of helping some folks understand a little bit more about the Chamber and its relationship with the city. The Chamber is not an arm of the city, and I'm sure many people know this. We have things like the Edge Committee. The Edge Committee, everyone on Edge is appointed by the council. The Chamber is not. The Chamber is its own entity. They approve their membership. They determine their membership and their board. And so there'd been a request made for the city to divest the Chamber somehow of its authority, and we can't do that, a- any more than we'd be able to do that for any other other business within the community. Where the chamber and the city have monetary, I guess I would say, where the, the city actually has money that is being used by the chambers in two areas, one is money that the city has provided to the chamber for many years as a part of the Contracts for Services Program. Contracts for Services, other recipients include like the Riverton Swim Club, the Riverton County Youth Services, the Riverton Volunteer Fire Department, Riverton Little League, Volunteers of America, PAWS, Chamber of Commerce, as I already noted, IPR or Injury Prevention Resources. These tend to be nonprofit organizations, many of them, not all, RREC, Eagles Hope Transitions. So that's one way that the city has supported the chamber. We have a liaison to the Chamber Board who actually is a member of the Chamber Board. That person up until January was Christie Salisbury, who's on the phone, and now it is Mike Bailey. So that's a little bit about the relationship between the city and the chamber. Next is TAD funds. TAD funds are what we have been discussing or what you've seen a lot of in media. TAD funds are funds from the lodging tax. The Wind River Visitors Council, president of which is Owen Sweeney over there, and the executive director of which is Helen Wilson, right near him, is in charge, it's a joint powers board, where there's representatives from each of the communities in Fremont County. They are in charge of figuring out where the lodging tax funds will be spent. As a part of that, we have a unique program in Wyoming where we have communities that have different interests than each other. And so the Wind River Visitors Council Board has approved TAD funds, or lodging tax funds, just by another name, really, to be given to the communities on the basis of how much they actually chip into the pot, so to speak. Riverton gets most of them, I think, or at least we're in the top three between Riverton, Dubois, and Lander. And so those are given to the city to decide how to spend. For many, many years, the city has given that responsibility to the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce has been given the authority by the city to find the best way that those dollars can be spent, subject to the oversight of the city and the Wind River Visitors Council Board. I explain all of this just to make sure that people kind of know where some of the ways that we're interlocked and that we aren't interlocked are. What we're talking about with this is particularly money that we have already agreed to pay the chamber, and the question is whether it would be paid out early. We're going to be discussing other matters later on, but I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we have Amendment One in our packets, and I would entertain a motion to approve Amendment One to the service agreement between the city of Riverton and the Chamber of Commerce.
Your Honor, this is Christie on the phone.
Yes.
Being on the chamber for the last three years, they've been through several difficulties that have been brought up in tonight's meeting. And one of the biggest changes from the first year I was on it, at that time, the TAD funding paid more of the director's salary than it has in the last couple of years. And then the, when that changed with some of the requirements, the chamber struggled to be able to afford to pay several directors. And the TAD money does allow for some salaries, and it's paying for call-in salaries who have weathered this awful storm of ups and downs that the chamber has been going through. So with that being said, I would make a motion to amend for the amendment, basically because I think with Pauline putting in the time he has, regardless of all the other mess, that I think helping pay him through whatever trouble is, would be the right thing to do.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Salisbury for the approval of Amendment One. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Cox. Further discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bailey?
I guess, what would be the date that that payment would normally be made? You, you said a couple of weeks or a few weeks or something.
Your Honor, it would be at the next Finance Committee meeting, which I believe is April 2nd.
Okay.
So we're talking about two weeks earlier.
So, Your Honor, we're not talking about not paying them the last portion. They're going to be paid regardless.
That's pursuant to the contract, yes.
That was my statement. We agreed that they would get four quarterly payments of $16,000. No?
Four, four quarterly payments of $4,000 for a total of $16,000.
For a total of $16,000.
Yes.
So all we're paying is, is several weeks early.
Correct. If that's.
On the agreed amount.
Correct.
So, so if this were PAWS or another one.
Eagles Hope.
Eagles Hope, then we would be doing the same thing. But.
And did. With Eagles Hope, it was a little earlier because we paid that end of February, middle of February, and that was about a month and a half early.
And I, and I understand there are, how do I say this, blood flowing in the aisle. People are angry. They don't see that there's been trust, but we have an obligation to live up to our part.
Your Honor.
As distasteful as it might be.
Right. Councilwoman Salisbury.
Previously, salaries could be paid out of TAD, and then last year, the city cleaned up and made the MOU, which required them to come before us to get it approved before they spent it.
Right.
And so they didn't follow the new MOU accordingly, but they've done, I mean, the, the money is allowed to go to call-in salaries. They just needed the MOU to come to us, and they didn't first.
And I guess that's an important distinction, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Salisbury, that the, the issue wasn't that some of this money was going towards a salary, because I think Ms. Wilson, Director Wilson, her salary, for example, is paid at least in part by the lodging tax. The issue was, according to the MOU, for that to be done, they had to come to the approval of the city, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly.
Your Honor.
Yes, that was my understanding.
Right. So if it was going to be used for salaries or operations or anything like that, we had to discuss it. You're welcome to come up if you'd like, Ms. Cortez. Make sure you tell us your name for people that don't.
My name is Tiffany Cortez. I'm the former executive director, and I just wanted to tell you that this was not a salary issue. This was an overdraft issue, and that was why they moved the account, the funds. It was not to pay salary. This was before salary was put out and before payroll was put out.
Mr. Bailey?
I guess, I got, I want to clear up a couple of facts that were misstated. So I did not bail out the chamber. I paid my dues, which I have done, my company has done since probably before I started working, which was in 1976. So I'm a longtime supporter of the Riverton Chamber of Commerce. I think that there have been mistakes made, obviously, but Riverton needs a good, solid, well-run Chamber of Commerce. They, they perform a vital service to our community. You know, people that are looking to relocate businesses, that kind of stuff, the first place they go is to the Chamber of Commerce to get information and look and.
You don't currently have that. You don't have that.
Please.
My turn. And so, you know, I think we need a good, solid, strong Chamber of Commerce, okay? And that's why I pay my dues to that organization. Do they need to look at tightening things up? I definitely think so. We have another item agenda on there that we're going to be talking about fully. I guess regarding this motion, we already have committed to paying the $4,000. I don't think this changes anything. If we vote it down, in two weeks, they get $4,000 from us instead of right, right away. So in that respect, I support the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to say something controversial, and I know that we cannot tell the chamber what to do. We're not responsible for the chamber. We only supplement their budget. But I would strongly encourage the board, whoever's sitting in here, talk to Tiffany about getting her job back, because it is ridiculous. And that's my own personal opinion.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
All for the motion.
All right. I have a motion for passage of Amendment One to the service agreement between the city of Riverton and the Riverton Chamber of Commerce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, our next item, related somewhat, Financial Review Report for Tourism Asset Development Funds, City Administrator's Report, or is this Ms. Harris? Okay, Mr. Butterfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know there's been a little bit of background on the program already, and I will try not to repeat what has already been said, but I think it is important to go through a little bit of the base information as it relates to the Tourism Asset Development Program. As already mentioned, this is a program that's supported by the Wind River Visitors Council. That is the Lodging Tax Board and is responsible for promoting the travel and tourism industry in Fremont County and on the Wind River Indian Reservation. As referenced by the mayor, the Wind River Visitor Council is very unique in that it has established the Tourism Asset Development Program, or TAD program. This program is to support Fremont County and to allow each community to promote its own individuality, especially as it relates to tourism and bringing people in to enjoy our community. The purpose of the TAD program is to provide financial support to communities through Fremont County Lodging Tax, and each community will utilize the funds to help grow their tourism economies by investing in new or expanding existing tourism-related services, events, improvements, signage, facilities, attractions, points of interest, and promotional activities. The goal is to increase visitor spending by encouraging visitors to stay longer in Fremont County. The TAD program receives 25% of the total annual revenue generated by the lodging tax. And I know we've talked about that before in this meeting, but how impressive is that? And, and how great a program and how unique our visitor council is, and I appreciate the fact that they allow each community the opportunity to be individuals and to market themselves. The city of Riverton has designated the chamber to serve as its established promotion committee to act on its behalf to receive and distribute TAD funds in a manner that best serves the city, the Riverton community, and immediate surrounding areas. The city council unanimously approved a memorandum of understanding between the chamber and the city on May 16th, 2023. This was in order to establish and clarify the responsibilities associated, associated, excuse me, with serving as the promotion committee on behalf of the city. The MOU was delivered to the chamber for review and comment in March of 2023, and the president of the chamber confirmed the MOU was agreeable to their organization in May of 2023. The council then took action thereafter. The MOU is in your packet, and there's been some reference to it. But in addition to assigning the chamber to act as its promotion committee, it does stipulate that the chamber will keep the TAD program funds separate from other chamber funds and will not use the same for chamber operations, personnel costs, or purposes unless prior permission is received from the Riverton City Council, and the approved use is consistent with TAD rules, guidelines, and regulations. To speak a little bit specifically about what those rules and regulations are, in your packet, there are two reference documents to the TAD program, one that was just recently produced, January 25th, 2024, and another that was produced and updated in February of 2021. Each of these documents are relatively consistent in informing the community about how TAD funds can be allocated and used. Specifically expenditures for travel, they shall be used, excuse me, specifically for expenditures for travel and tourism promotion, and be limited to promotional materials, television and radio advertising, printed advertising, digital content, social media, promotion of tours, staging of events, educational materials, and other specific tourism-related objectives, providing that none of these funds shall be spent for capital construction or improvements. So you can't take the funds to build something really cool, like a skate park, I don't know. It also states that the Attorney General in July of 1993 affirmed in an opinion that TAD funds, or lodging tax dollars more specifically, may be used for salaries for persons to answer tourist convention and tour-type inquiries and the like. TAD funds cannot be used for alcohol, lobbying efforts, and, as I already referenced, capital construction. New guidelines that were produced in January of 24 also state that they can't be used for marketing of private businesses or staff hours, except for frontline staff at visitor centers and convention and visitor bureaus. Those are items that were referenced in the recently updated TAD program outline. When the city council considered its MOU that was just recently referenced, it was in reference to the guidelines that were adopted in February of 2021, but again, they were very similar. It stated, "The funds can be used for advertising, digital and online marketing, website development, online digital marketing, social media, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, et cetera. Printed materials, special events and performances," and that's anywhere from parades, races, Native American dances, and sporting events or hunts. It also states that it could be used for providing frontline visitor center staff services. Pursuant to its write-in to the MOU, the city called for an audit of the TAD program administered by the chamber on February 28th, 2024. The chamber provided documents in a very responsive and quick turnaround. It provided documents related to the request on March 3rd, 2024, and March 6th, 2024. The Financial Review Committee comprised of myself, Administrative Services Director Mia Harris, and Deputy Treasurer Rio Godern was formed on the following day. The task of the review committee was to perform a review of the TAD monies held and administered by the chamber for calendar year 2023 and for the months of January and February in 2024. Included in your packet is a report from the Financial Review Committee. It should be noted that we served only as a financial review committee. A third-party auditing firm was not hired to perform a comprehensive audit of the TAD program, and the report generated by the committee represents an informal financial review of the documents provided by the chamber. The council may. The council may direct staff to engage a professional auditor if you feel that there is sufficient reason to do so. To speak more specifically to the committee's review of the financials, I want to make it clear that the Chamber did comply with the requirement to keep TAD dollars in a separate account. It was reported that on January 1, 2023, that account had a balance of $12,589.21. In reviewing the ledger that was provided by the Chamber, bank reconciliation documents, documents, and other financial documents, the committee was able to verify checks that were written from the account. It was also able to verify how those funds were allocated in reference to the year-end report that was provided by Ms. Cortez to you as a council and also to the Visitor Center, the Wind River Visitor Council, excuse me. Through calendar year 2023, there was $73,290 of TAD monies distributed to the Chamber of Commerce. There were $80,777.21 of allotment of those funds. The ending balance in the account was $5,102, and that corresponds with the financial report that was provided you and the Wind River Visitor Council as they reported on the use of the TAD funds for 2023. I'd like to also state that in addition to the information that the Chamber provided within the timeframe that was requested, upon receipt of the memorandum that the committee provided you and the Chamber, the Chamber provided additional information supporting the operations and use of the TAD program. First, they were able to provide checks that we were not able to verify in our first review, and they were able to tie that back to the financial documents. The next was verification of some of the transfers as it related to funds that went from the TAD account into the Chamber of Commerce account. I also like to say that the Financial Review Committee did not perform any type of review of the Chamber's financial documents or accounts. We only focused on the TAD program. As reported in the memorandum included in your packet, the committee did note that there were two checks written from the TAD account to the Chamber of Commerce in calendar year 2023. The first was posted January 30, 2023, in the amount of $6,249.99. The second was posted September 18, 2023, in the amount of $5,000. I'd like to note that the check that was cleared on January 30, 2023 was prior to the agreement that was put in place a little over a year ago between the city and the Chamber. The committee also noted that one check was written from the TAD account to the Chamber of Commerce in 2024, and that was posted on February 23, 2024, and was in the amount of $1,800. As the Financial Review Committee went through the checks and the documents, and also tied it back to the report that was provided by Ms. Cortez, the $5,000 that was cleared on September 18 from the TAD account to the Chamber account corresponds with the report that was provided you, that it was meant to go towards visitor center operating expenses, including the salary for visitor center presence by Colin while he worked out at the Heritage The $6,249.99 posting that happened on January 30, 2023, related to, in our opinion, as we worked through the various documents and also the report, but went towards the support of the yriverton.com site, website, its maintenance, and also social media management. The Finance Review Committee presents those items to you for your consideration. And I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to those that participated on that. I can't tell you how much I appreciate Ms. Harris for everything that she does, but more importantly, for coordinating with me two time zones away and being very patient with me as we work through this, and also Rhea Godern for her service as well. I'd also like to say thank you to the Visitor Council for providing documents in a timely manner, and also the Chamber for providing documents as we called for this financial review. They have participated and have been engaged through this process and have not obstructed our review in any way. As the City Council considers the information that was provided by the Financial Review Committee, you have a few decisions that you could consider at this time, or a few options that you could consider. The first is you could take no action and allow the Chamber to remain as your promotion committee for the TAD program. You could terminate the MOU with the Chamber and designate a new promotion committee regarding the TAD program as it moves forward. You could request further information from the Chamber of Commerce as it relates to the TAD program and also the financial documents that the committee reviewed. You could also engage a professional auditor to perform a comprehensive audit of the TAD funds held and administered by the Chamber, and naturally, you can take any other action that you see fit as an elected body. As far as a budget impact, there's no immediate or direct budget impact associated with the review that we performed. However, should the City Council choose to terminate the aforementioned MOU, the city would need to recuperate the funds currently held by TAD in the separate account that they've designated, and then the city would need to hold and administer them moving forward. Your Honor, I'd stand for any questions as you have them.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for file. Has the paper already reviewed applicants this year and awarded them?
Your Honor, Councilwoman, it's my understanding that they have not. I know they have opened an advertising period and closed it and received applications, but I believe they're waiting for this financial review process to close before they make any awards.
Did that answer your question, Councilwoman Salisbury?
Yes, I'm just, if, so, I guess we would need to decide if we do decide to keep the TAD funding, do we make the people apply all over again, or do we use their applications? Or what would our process be?
I guess that's up for discussion tonight, so. I'd entertain a motion as to any alternatives or what the council's pleasure is in regard Sure, go for it.
My name is Tiffany Cortez. So this email is from Julie Buller to the board. This is a quote from it. It says, "Keeping in mind that we just advanced $1,800 from TAD last week to cover our overdraft in our operating account." I did not hear that, did you address where the $1,800 went to? I did not hear that specifically.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
If you'd like me to answer that question.
Sure. Yes, thank you. You're welcome to stand up there.
We were able to verify that the funds indeed, through a check, were transferred from the TAD account into the Chamber account, but as a Financial Review Committee, we weren't able to verify how those funds were used or for what purpose, but we can report that they were transferred from one account to the other.
Okay. So basically, they were transferred from the TAD account, which pursuant to the MOU had been separate to their own.
Your Honor, were those funds transferred back at some point after the mistake was realized?
Your Honor, I don't have that information at this time.
Ms. Wilson, you're welcome to come up if you'd like. And you can too, Mr. Allen, just right after.
Hi, my name's Helen Wilson, Wind River Visitors Council. First, we really appreciate everybody who was involved in this review process. I think it was challenging and a lot of, a lot of information came out. We received the review from the city, and what, I have to say, we're concerned. The numbers, looking at the review and then looking at the reports that we've received from the chambers, some of them don't add up. There's a lot of questions. There's things like checks that can't be read. You know, I was trying to put together a list of what the concerns were, and the thing is, the documents are so different from one another that the numbers are just challenging to match up. And here's an example. So the check number 9385 for $5,000 posted on September 18th, well, that, that is on one of the TAD reports, and this is what we like to see. $5,000 visitor center operating expenses, including salary for visitor center presence by Colin while he worked at the Heritage Center. And then there's another check, January 30, 2023, for $6,249.99. There's no number on these reports that match that. And the Wind River Visitors Council is responsible for the lodging tax. We take that responsibility very, very seriously, and we're not saying that there's an issue. We just don't have the numbers in front of us that match up, and they need to. And, and whether it's bookkeeping, or whether there's an issue, or whether there's, I don't know, I can't even speculate what the issue is, but the numbers don't, the numbers don't match, and, and it's a concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, my name is Victor Allen, and I'm currently on the Chamber Board, serving as a new treasurer. I'd like to speak to the, the $5,000 that you're talking about. That was, I think, actually matched up with a payment that was made for one of our vendors that was listed on there. The question on the January 30 check that cleared, there was a budget that was put together and a former treasurer provided, here's where that money was, was coming from on a monthly basis. It represented three months of what had been approved by the TAD committee at that time prior to the MOU, and so it was like a November, December, and January amounts that came in as, as one check. We did actually find that this morning through discussions with the prior treasurer, and I've shared that with Mr. Butterfield. So we tried to find all of that information. The $1,800 that got transferred, candidly, that was a, the overdraft checks happened to be the two payroll checks for the two employees that came in that, that morning at the bank, and so that was, you know, we felt that that covered those payroll checks and thought that was a legitimate use, but obviously, there's a discrepancy in following through with the MOU, and that was wrong. Okay?
Thank you for the information, Mr. Allen. Appreciate it.
And, and Your Honor, just for clarification, the $5,000 I referenced was as reported for salaries. As Mr. Allen reported, there were funds attributed to Herman Global in the amount of 5,000. I think that's the vendor he's mentioning. There was funds appropriated to the website. There were other funds appropriated to Herman Global and Carol's Communications. And when we went through that and added those funds together, in addition to the aforementioned transfer of $6,249.99, that equated to $30,072. And in your year-end report from the Chamber, there was an explanation of $30,072 that was spent on yriverton.com site, maintenance, social media management. So we, as a Financial Review Committee, tried to read between the documents and the checks and tie it back to this report, but just for clarification's sake, I was referencing the 5,000 previously that went to, as reported, Colin's salary, the 5,000 that went to the vendor. We made an assumption that that was part of what was reported in the $30,000 and change, and that's, that's how we added that up. But again, that was through the efforts of the review committee as we tried to make sure that we could track everything back.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I think that from tonight's discussion, we can obviously all see that there's issues with the Chamber, and with that, I'd make a motion to terminate the MOU with the Chamber and designate a new promotion committee regarding the TAD program so that they can focus on what they were established to do.
I would second that.
Just want to make sure I have your motion. Motion to terminate the MOU with the Chamber.
Designate a new promotion committee regarding the TAD program.
You have that, Ms. Harris?
I do.
Thank you. And the second from Councilwoman orders. All right? All right, discussion then in that regard.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Would it make sense then to do a more comprehensive audit, or is there anything to be gained from that?
It's a good question. Mr. Butterfield?
Your Honor, I do not think so. I, I believe that the Chamber has been very cooperative through this, and as I mentioned, the review committee was able to at least track the funds that were held separately and tie them back to the report. I, I don't think there's anything else to be gained from a further audit, and we appreciate their cooperation through that process, and we stand by the, the report that we provided, but I don't think there's any need to go any further.
Again, I'm just curious, if we are going to terminate it, do we start the process over, or do we have advice from the TAD committee on what's been presented?
Your Honor.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question, Councilwoman Salisbury. You're saying in terms of the, the TAD grantees that are currently in limbo.
Your Honor, I previously just filled out one of those applications for Riverton Legion Baseball, and it's a thorough application. I feel like if we move forward with this motion, we'd be able, the new committee would be able to review those.
Your Honor, I apologize. What I would say is if, if the council does move forward with this motion, the process would be, we would continue to work with the Chamber on the transfer of the funds that were previously reported that is, right now, is a balance in that account. And I would say we would definitely receive the applications that have already been submitted. I would also welcome the application from the Chamber, as it is appropriate for them to utilize TAD funds, and they should be welcome to, to apply like any other entity. And we can work as staff to make a recommendation for a promotion committee, and we can move pretty quickly on this because I know those that have applied are needing those funds. So that's how I would say we would move forward, and we can hone down the details, but we'd first continue to work with the Chamber. We would definitely review what's been submitted. We'd give the Chamber an opportunity to submit, and then we'd work, work together.
Would that be something where staff would then review the applications and then come to the council with the recommendation? Is that what you're saying would be available?
Your Honor, what I have in my mind, and I know we're kind of brainstorming at this point, but there's an opportunity to have your staff members do that. There's an opportunity to form a committee that would include staff and members of the community. I would definitely say we could propose something at the next business meeting to establish that review or that promotional committee.
Mrs. Cortez?
Yes, Your Honor. So this email, I guess I should read more of it. This email is from Julie Buller. It says, "Tiffany and I met with the Chamber accountant today." This is dated the 28th. "As of 2/28/24, the general operating will be overdrawn $2,013.71 after the five checks presented for payment to Ash Grove Properties, Wyoming.com, Office Shop, Kyros Communications, and Albright Becker &amp; Stoddart. This overdraft does not include Tiffany's month-end payroll check for $1,483.76 and Colin's payroll check for $958.62. Our payroll taxes in the amount are also of $13,000 and some are..." Our payroll taxes in the amount are also of $13,000, and some are also due by 3/15, bringing our total projected overdraft to $5,838.5, keeping in mind that we just advanced $1,800 from TAD last week to cover our overdraft in operating account, which brings us to this new total. So I just wanted to go on record to say that this was not used for payroll. These funds were transferred to 22, according to my records. So this was before payroll, and it was not as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, again, I think, just like we talked about with the Edge Committee funds, um, you know, these monies that we get through the Wyoming, uh, lodging tax that gets passed back to the Visitor Council, which then gets passed back to us, you know, I think we need to treat these very carefully. Um, I think, again, hindsight being 2020, I think we did not put enough checks and balances in place. And, and I think doing this, bringing that back under the City of Riverton would do that. It would let the Chamber still use those funds where they're appropriate, but being approved by us and us managing that financial area. So I think, I think that would be a good idea, uh, moving forward. And I would say even to be expedited because the applications are already in process. I think we could take them and even as a Council, we could do this years and then build a committee, you know, moving forward to do that in the future or something. So, um, I would call for the question unless we have other comments.
I just have one last question. I think, um, in the past, it's kind of fallen about when things are open, when they're shut, if you're awarded, what needs to be turned in, by what date. So I think it would take a load off the Chamber, but, um, I agree with Mike. It needs to be expediated this year.
Mr. Cortez?
Hi, I'm Damian Cortez. I spoke earlier, and I'll try to just use the rest of my five minutes and be brief. Victor just stood up here and lied to you, and I hope you all are aware of that. That email proves that they all knew exactly what these monies were moved to cover, okay? And for a higher up at a bank who's a Treasurer, to be irresponsible with these funds, if that isn't the most frightening thing said in this room tonight, I, then, then I don't know. You ask a question, Mr., I, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
Dean Warrant.
Dean Works. Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, about whether the money was moved back. That's irrelevant. I can't go into a store and remove products from the store and then go back in a few days later and put those products back. If I came to your home and took from your home, can I just come back later and bring you a different, a different valuable? No. What they did isn't okay, and as I understand it from my research, is illegal. And I hope that whatever motions the Council makes today reflect that. And I hope that the consequences handed out, if they are handed out, which I think everybody in this room and the majority of the people in Riverton that we've spoken to, that, that they are, that the punishment fits the crime, because that's what happened here. They paid fast and loose with monies that weren't theirs. Tiffany had been at this job for five months, and she knew the ins and outs of the MOU and the rules with this money. Why doesn't the President? Why doesn't the Vice President? Why doesn't the Treasurer? And someone asked a question about signatures? They haven't been double signing. Checks are supposed to be signed by the Director and the Treasurer. And up until last month, Victor was not even on the accounts. Okay? I know that the Chamber, that the Chamber and the City are separate, but the City is a member of the Chamber, and there are a lot of members in this community. The bylaws that you're all supposed to have say that the membership can remove one or all members of the Board. And I hope, when I, when I asked that earlier, I, I understood the City has very little recourse here, other than in regards to these monies. But the City is a Chamber member, and the other members of this community have a lot of recourse. And I hope that action will be taken. Thank you.
Your Honor, if I can make a quick comment.
Yes, Dean.
The reason for my question on returning the funds wasn't to make it go away or to make it better, but to reestablish the consistency of the TAD account, to make sure that that was made back whole again. Right? Not, not to make it better or go away.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bailey?
And we're also not a court of law, and we're not the Chamber membership in its entirety or the Chamber Board. So we only can take action on the things that we have control over, and that's what we're doing. So.
You can come on up if you'd like. And you can too after she gets done. You're welcome.
I just have a quick question pertaining to whether or not the funds were reimbursed. I asked that question as well. Where did the money come from? Where did the money to reimburse it come from? Because it's been made clear that it has been reimbursed. Ms. Buller stated that in one of her interviews, that the money had been reimbursed. Where did that come from if we're $2,000 in the hole? And also, why is it that we needed the transfer in the first place for an overdraft fee, which Ms. Cortez cited in an email, if we can just make up the money to reimburse it right away when we're called out on it? That's the only question I have.
Thank you. Go ahead and come on up, sir. And if you can tell us your name.
Here, most of you already know me.
We do.
My name's Jim Cassidy. Member of the Riverton Fire District, and I know where I'm speaking for them tonight. But what I want to do is remind everybody sitting up here, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Riverton, ensure that their money is spent well, and that it, that there's no fraud involved with this money. At this point, from the reports I've heard, I don't think that can be proven. Um, I'd urge you to vote, to revoke the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, sir. And I guess, uh, to follow up on that, Mr. Cassidy, and you can sit down. You don't need to, don't worry about it. That's, that's part of what is the burden that we always have. Um, the budget is something that is an obligation we have to ensure that it's being used properly. That's why we have what feels like a million budget meetings. Not trying to say that's a problem.
Only like nine.
Feels like a million. And, um, that's why we talk about the budget ad nauseam. That's why we have a public hearing for the budget. Um, and ultimately, part of why this MOU was even considered and passed and, and discussed is because we wanted to take that seriously. We wanted to make sure that our, we're not laying down on the job. Because ultimately, the TAD funds were meant to go to the communities. And so we're responsible to the taxpayers, to the Wind River Visitors Council Board. And so that's why we even, the, the MOU was even contemplated and completed. And I think you, you've, all of us up here feel that. And that's why we're even talking about it today. There wasn't a lot of, you know, hemming and hine and should we be doing a financial review or not? Everybody here was like, okay, if there's concerns, let's figure them out. I will encourage people to remember that the Chamber is a volunteer board. I don't say that to justify what they do or to say that it somehow makes everything all right. But I do say it that sometimes we get a little bit worried about volunteering. And, um, really, what we need is good people willing to volunteer. And so for everyone that's saying, hey, we should do something about the Chamber, one of the best ways to accomplish that would be to join the Chamber and make differences from within. Now, that sounds a little bit funny and probably is contrary to what Ms. Harper had said, saying, wait a minute, we should dissolve it and start over. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But I can say that the community needs to be served by good business owners and needs to be served by good business organizations, of which we have many, and it needs to be served by good volunteers. So if, if you have concerns about things and you're wanting to make a difference, go and talk to the people and get involved. And I'm not trying to tell you anything that people don't already know, but what I want to say more than anything is, no matter where you are serving, please, just try to make sure you're doing your best. Because I hope you understand, I know the individual members of the Chamber Board. I've met them. I think there's a lot of really good people on there that have good ideas and just want the community to be better. Um, I think, as we've discussed here, what was done here with the MOU in particular, not a good idea. And there's a lot of people here that have said that it wasn't a good idea what happened with Ms. Cortez. I get that. So, anyway, I'm off my soapbox, but I guess.
Your Honor, just one more thing on that note. Um, being a part of it, there is a lot of turnover on the Chamber both Directors and members after they serve their time. And consistently, they are not able to fund themselves because they need to get more memberships, and they need to do activities and events to raise the money or else, I mean, I don't know how many times I've asked, do we have the money that we need to have? It's like, well, we're going to run out in a month or two. Like, the problem is, is not funding itself.
Right. So anyway, um, I, the point is, we hear you. Um, we're trying to take that seriously. We will take it seriously. Um, and, uh, really, from my vantage point, and I've talked to everybody else on the Council, we see taxpayer funds is as close to sacred as you can get. You have to keep them separate. You have to keep them differently than you do other things.
Your Honor, our state legislature passed a law that requires those that serve on a, on a board that handles public money, we have to do this particular training course so that these types of things are addressed, knowing how to handle those funds, what the, what the procedures have to be. And the integrity piece is huge in that. Um, the way they went about mandating the training and the timelines and so forth was a little bit arduous on those that serve on voluntary boards. You know, so for somebody who's on a voluntary board, they have to go someplace and seek an eight-hour or full day's worth of training, highly important. I, I appreciate that. Um, and then subsequently, they've made it a little bit easier for that training to be had online. I think that's fantastic. Uh, the mandates were a little onerous, but I think there's, there's a definite requirement that we have that training in any public office that deals where, or on any board that deals with public money. And I think it's imperative that, that we continue to support that, and those that are on boards get that training because it addresses this very thing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. Are we ready? Oh?
I, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm in favor of bringing that, uh, TAD money back to the Council. Um, and one of my main reasons is the Chamber's been fraught with problems since I've been on Council. That started in 2019, and I'd really like to see them focus on what they can do to be successful, to drive their income sources. And, um, I think they need time to be able to do that. So that's why I'm voting to take it away from them.
Councilwoman Larson?
Um, I hope this isn't the last comment, but.
Probably is.
My brother, uh, Dean talked about the course that we've all gone through, and it was arduous. Pulling fingernails is a lot more enjoyable. But they said this, if you have to ask, you don't do it. If you have to ask an attorney if that's correct, you don't do it. Well, uh, Mayor Hancock has said it as plain as possible. The money that we have is not ours. We monitor it and make sure it is spent well. And, um, it's just, um, we don't have the magic wand for the Chamber of Commerce. But we do have the magic wand on returning our TAD money and administering it ourselves till we can find a better method. Uh, just, uh, we don't need to add layers of more employees to the city budget. The, that in itself, we're trying to minimize. So we will do that, and, uh, we, you can honestly, we do not spend money frivolously here.
Your Honor, can I make one comment additional?
Yes.
Before I call for the question?
Yes.
I, I want to appreciate everybody who came tonight to talk about this. It is really important, and it's part of our civic duty to have these conversations, right? It's what makes us citizens. And if we don't have the conversation, if people don't come to these meetings to express themselves, then, you know, how are, how's anybody held accountable? So in this particular case, we may not be able to address a specific concern with another board, but there are things that can be done, and I think everyone's opinion has been expressed pretty thoroughly and fairly clearly. But I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for listening.
And you, and Your Honor, I'll call for a question, please.
Great. All in favor of terminating the MOU with the Chamber and designating a new promotion committee? Say aye.
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 I vote aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. All right. Uh, I'd like to now take a 10-minute break if we can, and we'll come back and finish up our, uh, agenda. Yes.
Run.[1577.48]
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols can talk a little bit about the specifics of that. The MOU proposes a change to the discretionary part, or the 70% portion of the funds received from the economic development tax. What's proposed, and is included in your packet, is of the 70%, this discretionary, 33% of the 70 would go towards support of commercial air service. So, additional support towards commercial air service. 10% is proposed of that 70% to go towards ground transportation support. 28% of that discretionary amount would go towards ambulance services. That would leave 29% of the 70% for projects and programs that would be at your discretion and that would go through the similar process you have now with the Edge Committee. To speak maybe in a little bit easier term as far as percentages go, of the overall allocation, so not taking a percentage of a percentage, the additional component to commercial air service would represent 23% of the overall collection. The additional support for ground transportation would be 7% of the overall. Ambulance would represent 20% of the overall. And then of the overall, 20% would be for programs and projects. I thought I'd just represent that both ways so that you could kind of see how it was carved up of the 70% portion, but also how it was carved up of the entire portion. The Fremont County Association of Governments considered this at their most recent meeting and proposed that this go back, this amendment go back to the individual governments that are participants of FCAAG, and that's what's before you tonight. And, your honor, I'd stand with any, for any questions, but the information is included in your packet.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, do you mind coming up and introducing yourself to everyone here and tell us what you do?
That's yet to be determined. Honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. This is a great opportunity to introduce myself, Tim Nichols, newly appointed administrator of Fremont County Association of Governments and director of Wind River Transportation Authority. Apologize for my informal appearance, but the weather was so beautiful, I couldn't resist. So, shorts are coming on, and, you know, jeans are getting packed. Just to, and I've got Chemiquersistic as well here with me. But to provide some backstory to this, when I first came on, there were some discussions largely prompted by diminishing public support of the half percent in economic development during a critical time and its uncertain success in November. With that information, FCAAG kind of began the discussion of what can be done, given the tools at our disposal, to help reinstate that confidence. So, in response, FCAAG formulated a recommendation that would redistribute the 70% in a manner that they felt may reinstate the public confidence and better secure foundational elements of public, or, sorry, foundational elements of economic development for future success in the community and to reinstate confidence in the tax to secure future passing. These elements would provide additional funding to air and ground transportation, the inclusion of the ambulance service overall, and more standardized distribution model for the remaining projects and programs funds to be used at the entity's discretion. This recommendation comes with no intention other than FCAAG heard public frustration and are offering a solution and recommendation of the governing bodies to consider. The public seems to have an affixed hesitation with the 70%. So, this proposed modification focused primarily around that 70%. This modified MOU better defines guardrails for the funds and allocates them to specific silos that would, with any luck, appease some public frustration and concern should the recommendations prove sufficient. FCAAG is simply requesting that in knowing your constituents as well as you do, you consider the modification and determine whether or not it is sufficient to secure the tax's success in November. The concept, or the primary concept of utilizing sales tax where everyone contributes in lieu of the property tax owner or the property owner and their taxes is an impactful tool that this community has opted to apply, and it should be at everybody's main, or it should be part of everybody's focus to retain that tool. That being said, FCAAG has provided you with their recommendations. Should these recommendations be appealing to your constituents and yourselves, FCAAG requests that you authorize the mayor to sign the modified MOU. And I'll stand for any questions, and Kevin is behind me to answer or likely to provide cleanup if needed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I guess I would note, when I was looking at this, we had discussed early on with FCAAG, they had discussed the possibility of an entrepreneurship program being funded in part with these funds. The vote was against that from FCAAG. There is still a reference to that? I don't know if you saw that. Okay, good.
If I might, mayor. The reference simply indicates that if it does prove to be in the interests of the majority or the entities still present, they can come to an agreement outside of the modified MOU to fund with their own half percent or, you know, their own projects and programs funds, an entrepreneurship program.
Okay, I see. So, if there were proceeds designated for future countywide entrepreneurship programs, they'd be allocated to the county. I see. Thank you. I thought it was a typo. I have typos sometimes. Any questions for Mr. Nichols? We stole him, by the way, from Laramie.
Awesome.
You ran the, if you've ever taken a bus at UW, in the last, how many years were you running that?
Sure, I'll give a brief backstory. So, I, when did I, I don't know. I left for the University of Wyoming in 2010, and I did not come back until this year. So, I spent the last, however, 14 years at this point getting an education or multiple educations at that point, and then they wouldn't let me go. So, I worked for the university for the last 12 years, 12 of the 14 years. And in the last eight of those, I spent managing the transportation department there, which facilitated all public transportation, both fixed route and abandoned response.
So, we're pretty lucky to get him. Lot of experience. Mr. Bailey?
And I, as your job with WR TA, the additional 7% or 10%, whichever way you want to call it, can you tell us a little bit about, like, what the ridership is? I know the bus is an important way for people to get around the county. Obviously, we have a lot of miles to travel. There's a lot of people that are, you know, without vehicles or challenging in their transportation, and I think that's vital to them, being able to get a job and keep a job and all of those kind of things, you know, get around the community to take care of the services that they need. And then I'd have the same question for Kyle on the cost of the, I forget, it's the service hours that the airline charges, which I think are climbing tremendously, like everything else in the world. But, so, two-part question.
You could go first.
Mayor, councilman, thank you for that question. So, the additional ground transportation, I would like to just preface the conversation slightly with the fact that FCAAG has successfully implemented a ground transportation fund, which will help fund not only the Wind River Transportation Authority but other entities not service, or not in the service area. Ridership, again, adapting to a much more rural atmosphere is alarmingly low. I've been, spent the last five months kind of developing a strategic plan, five years for WR TA and how we can change that. The additional funds could go in multiple different directions, but primarily what they should be known for doing is leveraging a much greater amount of funds with the state grants available, right? So, these would provide, these could extend out to about $875 usable dollars, that's $875,000 usable dollars for transportation uses. My initial recommendation would likely be to secure a more functional commuter line system and then have a series of implementation over the next five years that would service the gaps that I've identified in several areas, one of which would include a Riverton intercity, which I'm not 100% sure why it doesn't exist, but is very feasibly done. So, with those...
That's what we wanted to hear right there. Yeah.
Now, expansion of services possibly to include, part of what we've discussed, for example, is DuBois.
Yep.
Shoshone, being able to really make it so that people can get around the county.
Yes.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
What is your total ridership? And which direction is it going?
Yeah, mayor, councilman, thank you. So, the ridership in total rests in the 36 to 42-ish thousand on average per year. Mainly, the issue with identifying the main source of ridership in its direction is because of the model that has been implemented at WR TA as primarily contract-for-service based. So, it's mostly fixed its ridership alongside of its main contracts, like Head Start and some entities like that. So, the primary use of the commuter line, however, is identified from, I would say, the majority, the greater of 40% of that ridership is traveling from Lander to Riverton. And then you do have, surprisingly, a lesser amount traveling from Riverton to Lander. So, again, the reflection of that or the, what you would do with that data is just realize that the functionality of the system is not user-friendly. So, what do we do about that is, you know, you start to modify the structure. You base it off population density, peak hours of operation, peak hours of ridership, and you just use that data to implement a more effective system, and quite frankly, more cost-effective as well. So...
Any other questions?
Since we're talking about ridership, I'm wondering what you've found with the reservation and how you can modify the transportation out there?
Absolutely. Mayor, councilwoman, thank you. So, when it comes to the service to the reservation, it's an interesting dynamic I'm not particularly familiar with, but WR TA is not a recipient of any tribal transportation funding. So, which is not a problem. We still provide that service outward to the reservation because it intersects with the greater Fremont County area. But surprisingly, I, being blunt, the ridership is alarmingly low for the cost, right? You calculate these decisions based on a cost-per-passenger model, right? And I am genuinely concerned with the amount of funds that have been invested in upwards of $30,000. in upwards of $30 per passenger, and it's, it's concerning. So, you know, that we get to work and we strategically implement changes and build a more effective model. I think the impact on the reservation can be great, and we can do many things, so. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
The data is sparse and we are still.
Yeah. Mr. Butterfield, if you're ready for your part of the question, did he give you enough time?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you need me to ask Tim another question?
No, I just actually started squirreling on something else that was in my head. No, I'm happy to respond to that. We're actually working through contract negotiations right now with SkyWest, and yesterday I was on a conference call with our partners in Gillette, Sheridan, Rock Springs, and also the state of Wyoming as it relates to block hour cost increase. We will see a block hour cost increase, and the justification has to do with a new negotiated contract for the pilots that are flying for SkyWest. Labor costs, and as Councilman Bailey stated, everything seems to be more expensive as of late. So Mr. Krasznik has also been working with me on the, the potential costs associated with the block hour rate increase and its direct relationship to the minimum revenue guarantee. And without squirreling too deep, the block hour cost is one component of the minimum revenue guarantee. That's the expense side. So for every hour that the plane is in the air, there's a block hour rate that's applied that's offset by the revenue that's generated. So those assumptions relate to how much our community or our flyers are paying each, for each seat, and then how many seats are full on each plane. Right now, we're working through an assumption that with the new block hour rate increase, 70% load factor, and then projected average fare, we'd have an increase on our MRG, but it's still in negotiation, and so I'm not ready to present that at this point. But with the proposal that's before you from FCAAG and Mr. Nichols, that helps cover our obligation for commercial air service and connectivity to the national transportation network. And I hope I answered that question specifically. If I squirrel too much, bring me back, I'll get, I'll get on it.
Well, I guess the, the point is, that I think is important, is we want to make sure that the, if we were to approve this MOU, we want to make sure that the money is being used for what we want it to be used for, which would be the MRG and towards transportation. So that's, I guess, that's my question, is making sure, you know, these amounts weren't just something that we threw out for fun, you know? It was something that we're like, okay, we're looking at the budget, if we were able to get these additional funds, it would be able to cover the MRG better, or we'd be able to work towards additional services in the county. And I think that's really my question, and it sounds like you've answered that, and it also sounds like you've fairly well answered that, Mr. Butterfield, although there are still some details to be negotiated and sorted out for sure, if I'm not mistaken.
Your Honor, that's correct, and that new rate will be coming towards you because you do have to approve that through an MOU with the state of Wyoming. But as Mr. Krasznik and FAST have been working on this, we've been making conservative estimates based on preliminary information from the negotiations, and what's proposed to you will help us as we meet our obligation moving forward.
And I guess the, something to remind folks of is that each community chipped in what, last year for FAST, or not for FAST, but for the MRG, because we found that the amount that we had set aside with the half cent was not sufficient. So we're already looking at that situation where we've had increases that we've needed to cover.
Your Honor, that's correct, and I guess I am belaboring the point, so I won't apologize for that. But when the half-cent tax was first proposed to the public, and as we were working through the percentage allocation, it was based on the contract we currently had with SkyWest, it was the original three-year contract. After the tax was passed, we went into the next three-year portion of that contract. We're about to enter year three of the second contract, and there's an escalation clause in there, and that's what they're exercising because of their new pilot negotiated contracts. So yes, you're correct that when it was first proposed, it was under the assumption of one contract. We did have to go back and had success, and we want to say thank you for our partners because we were able to receive additional funds than just what was allocated in the 20%. And then what will happen with this MOU is it will solidify, as things move forward, the additional funds that would be required for commercial air service.
And I guess the other question too, and this is for you, Tim, the projects and programs, that's meant to be discretionary spending by the communities, though.
By each entity, that's.
Same as what we have the 70% for now. Okay. That was a question that was asked. Wanted to make sure if anybody had that as a question still, they knew. Any other questions for Mr. Nichols? Do we have a motion in regards to the MOU?
Your Honor, I move that we move forward with the modification of the Fremont County sales tax, economic development memorandum of understanding. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Pronto, a second by Councilman Bailey, to adopt the MOU, is that correct, as it's been presented by FCAAG? Okay. I guess on that note, before we vote, Hudson has approved it so far. Shoshone, I think, has not gotten a vote on it yet, but they are going to approve it as I understand it. County has not. But that's life.
They're going to wait till the end.
They probably will, which is honestly a good move on their part, honestly.
We did take an opportunity at the last airport board meeting, one of our county commissioners was there, and we took the opportunity to express the importance of, and the return on, on that investment. And he was pretty happy to hear that there was some support, numerical support to help the cause, because this is a substantial change in what was previously approved. So he's kind of going to bat for that as well.
Well, and I will say too, and, and we've talked a lot about the portion of this that is transportation in terms of air and WRTA. A big part of this is the ambulance service. We're talking about, of the whole, 20% would be going towards ambulance service. My understanding that is, so it would go to the county according to the new MOU, it would not cover it all. They would still have to be supplementing with funding from the county general fund, but it would, I think there's been a lot of discussion of who pays for ambulance, you know, should it be the property owners or not, or who? And having this be something that's covered with the economic development tax, it's still got to go back to economic development because that's the purpose of the tax under the state I think that Mike Jones was saying, well, you know, if you've got a operating ambulance, there's definitely an economic benefit to that, to your community. If you are injured, you are.
On the job.
Yeah, on the job, going to be able to get help quickly, be able to get to a hospital, that kind of thing. Very similar to the economic development benefit of a hospital, for example.
Yep.
So that's, I guess, what's been said in that regard. I think it can be helpful. As I said, it's still not going to cover all of it, but it definitely take some of the burden off.
Big bite out of that apple, yeah.
Right.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
This ambulance fee, you're wondering if the county will pass it, they will pass it with skid marks. The.
Stopping or going skid marks?
Going. It will be, it'll be a drag.
Those are, those are like peel-out marks.
Peel-out marks.
We gotta be, we gotta be careful, man.
Peel-out marks.
Not stopping, but you're saying they're going so fast.
Oh, yeah.
I don't understand the metaphor.
Once, once this is signed by all the entities, that, that 854,000 helps them out considerably. And they're funding that now, and they're trying to figure out how in the heck to fund the ambulance. And the ambulance is a very difficult, you figure it out, at 43, there's $19 a seat to ride from here to Lander, I know they don't charge that, but you look, figure out the number of ambulance calls, and it's considerably more than $19, so.
Well, and I will say too, this, this does mean there would be a lot less that we would have to work with towards the edge funding, though.
Yeah.
We're talking about cutting it in half.
Yep.
Which is something we'd have to be prepared to deal with, because, for example, the hospital, we wouldn't have been able to fund them to the extent that we did if we only had half of that. Many of the projects that we funded, if you think of them just being half of what we've been able to put into it. So that is a consideration for sure, is.
It is still a robbing Peter to pay Paul, because right now there are other county services that aren't being provided, or fully provided, because there's, that money's certainly being used for ambulance. So until they base it on some sort of a mill, there's not really a whole lot you can do.
And at least with sales tax, the entire population's contributing to that, and the travelers and the tourists and all of that kind of stuff, so I don't know what the percentage is, you guys probably know, but, I mean, you know, a property tax is paid 100% by people in Fremont County, the sales tax is probably paid 60% by people in Fremont County, or something, so. We're spreading the love among our visitors, so.
70's a higher number than I would have thought, that's great.
Call for the motion, sir.
Oh.
Question.
We've got a call for the question. I think people are wanting to go home.
Not even ten yet.
This is early for us.
And we still have time.
I know.
All right, all in favor of adopting the MOU as been presented and discussed from FCAAG, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I vote aye, motion passes. All right, do we need to do an executive session?
No, Your Honor.
Yay.
Thank you for that. You're our favorite person of the evening. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by Councilwoman Borders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned at 9:51.